All right. It says it's four o'clock, so it must be. We will go ahead and get started. Welcome to the August 12th, 2025 Salinas City Council meeting. I'm going to call the meeting to order, and then I'm going to ask Patty, you know, we took a bit of a break, so we may all be a little rusty, but we can count on you.
This meeting is available in Spanish for members of the public in attendance, and on Zoom, translation devices can be obtained in the foyer. Esta reunión está disponible en español para los miembros del público, y en Zoom, las unidades de traducción se pueden obtener en la entrada de la rotonda.
And Zoom webinar participation is available for members of the public. The Zoom webinar ID and link are available on the posted agenda on the city website. With that, we will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, omnipotient, and testable. Okay, thank you. All right. Let's see. Patty, you want to check up on us and see who's here?
Thank you, Mayor. Roll call, Councilmember Barajas.
Present.
Councilmember Barrera.
Here.
Councilmember Diorigo.
Present.
Councilmember De La Rosa. Absent. Councilmember Salazar.
Here.
Councilmember Sandoval.
Here.
Mayor Donahue.
I am here.
Thank you.
With that, we are going to proceed to closed session and talk about real property negotiations and labor negotiations. I am rusty. Is there any public comment before we head into closed session? All right. We're going in. We're heading into closed session. Is there any public comment on the closed session items before we head into closed session? Okay. So we are going to proceed into closed session, and we will be back at five o'clock. Was there a hand? Okay.
One on Zoom, Mayor.
Is there one on Zoom?
Apologies.
Okay, thank you. Okay, go ahead.
Yes, maybe I'm a little confused about procedure, but... So we can only comment right now on the issues you're going to talk about in the closed session, and the rest of the public comments will be at five. Is that it?
We will return to council chambers, and then the rest of the agenda will pick up at five o'clock. Yes.
And that's when public comments and other topics can be entertained?
On other topics, yes. This is just public comment for the closed session items.
Okay.
All right? So you have time.
All right.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Okay. We'll be back. All right. It looks like it's about time to go. All right, so we will get started with round two of the city council meeting. There is nothing to report out of closed session, and so with that, we will then proceed to new employee welcomes and introductions. Ms. Brenton has jumped to the podium.
Thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon, council members. I'm pleased to announce three promotions and one new hire in community development. Ana Jacinto and Sergio Ponse both promoted from Code Enforcement Officer One to Code Enforcement Officer Two. Ana had been working as a Code Enforcement Officer One since December '22 and Sergio since January '23. I also want to share that Ana Perez Ventura is now an office technician. She had been working in our community development department in various temporary roles since 2021 and has now been hired in a full-time position supporting our payroll. A new hire is Oded Zamanovich. He is a management analyst, providing software legislative and administrative support in our permit services division, and comes with extensive expertise in budget analysis, policy, and legislative analysis for other jurisdictions on the peninsula. So we congratulate them on their promotions and welcome Oded to our city.
Good evening, council members, Mayor, City Manager, City Attorney. I'm really pleased to announce the permanent promotion of the Assistant Chief to Luis Bravo. That was effective on July 7th. He's a 25-year veteran with the Police Department, so we're excited to have him. We also hired a lateral police officer from the city of Seaside, Gabriel Alexander Felton. And then we're pleased to announce four new hires that started the police academy just a couple of weeks ago, and that is Sergio Jimenez Garcia, Isaiah Damian Rodriguez, Kentrell Devantreus Wesley. So more additions to the Police Department, so thank you.
So I'm here to introduce you to four, five promotions and a new hire. We hired a Public Service Maintenance Worker One, Leonardo Alvarez Chavez. We promoted John Ball into Urban Crew Supervisor. We put Gary Gabriel is now the Superintendent of Maintenance Services at the Yard. Stephen Lieberman, who's in the audience here, he was promoted from a temporary position into the GIS Technician One. And then we also have Alexis Ortiz promoted into the Engineering Aid Two, and Yasmit Rojas Alvarez was promoted into Office Technician.
And for the airport, I just want to introduce that we hired a new office technician. This is July 21st, Icias Peria. So, thank you.
Very good. That's it. Okay. All right. Next up, we are looking for a presentation on Alliance on Aging. So you have the floor.
Evening. I want to thank you, Mayor Donahue, and council members for the opportunity to present our Local Aging and Disabilities Action Plan, known as the LADAP. I'm Teresa Sullivan, and I am the project facilitator. I'm the former director of the Alliance on Aging, but I have our new executive director, Michael Donahue, AKA MJ, here today, so you get an opportunity to at least see him.
Does he spell his name right?
Pardon me?
Does he spell his name right?
Yes, he does, and he noticed...
And so do you.
And so do you, yes.
Yeah, okay, just checking. Okay, proceed.
So Alliance on Aging was awarded a grant by the California Department of Aging to create a local model of the California Master Plan on Aging. The LADAP is a community-driven, multi-sector plan that builds on the work that has been done by many for decades in our local communities. The LADAP project area focuses on the rural and agricultural areas of North and South Monterey County and the greater Salinas area. AARP has identified eight domains of livability: housing, outdoor spaces and buildings, transportation, civic participation in employment, communication and information, social participation, health services, and community supports. Alliance on Aging adopted or adapted those eight domains of livability, embedding respect and social inclusion across all of the domains and adding disaster preparedness and services. The planning process and recommendations utilize these eight domains as a framework for the action plan. So the process began with convening an advisory committee with representatives from 37 organizations and 15 community members from the project area. See if it's working there. Here we go. They have provided support at every stage and level of the process and were vital to creating this plan. I can't overemphasize that. They participated in a total of 45 meetings and will continue to meet in the implementation stage. We completed an asset inventory of local resources, which included presentations to the Advisory Council from 39 local organizations representing multiple sectors. We conducted a community assessment of local resources, which included presentations to the Advisory Council from 39 local organizations representing multiple sectors. We conducted a community assessment in Spanish and English from March to June of 2024, facilitated by Applied Survey Research. 397 individuals completed the survey. In addition, 42 people completed a stakeholder survey. From October of 2024 through January 2025, a community forum, eight community forums called solution summits, were conducted in Spanish and English in Gonzalez, Solidad, Greenfield, King City, Salinas, Casterville, and Prundale. 232 community members participated, 191 were Hispanic, and 222 were over 60. In February of 2025, the advisory group was convened to select priority recommendations for the action plan, based on the results of the survey and the solution summits. They broke up into domains and were asked to identify at least one priority goal fleshed out and identify additional key recommendations. So just in case you're getting nervous looking at that plan and how detailed is it, I'm not going to go through all of it. We're going to hit the highlights, so... Last month, Monterey County was awarded, well, actually, it was in June, Monterey County was awarded its official status as a member of the National AARP Network of Age-Friendly States. This was based on the LADAP work that we had done to date, and also a lot based on a lot of the rich history that we have in our community of fostering age and disabilities-friendly communities. So as a culmination of all this community-driven work, we provide you with the LADAP Action Plan, a comprehensive guide with background data and priority action recommendations. You've all been given a copy in English and Spanish, and all the recommendations are by domain, those eight domains I talked about, and they're all included in this executive summary kind of early in the report, so you don't have to wait through the 74 pages to get to that. So in the interest of time today, I'm going to summarize those and only hit one of those goal recommendations in each domain. Establish a community-based group that reflects the diversity of each project area to spearhead increased interaction and communication with city and county representatives. Employment. Create and distribute a resource list for older adults and individuals with disabilities so they have access to information related to employment, education, training, and volunteer Communication and information. Develop a communication strategy that increases awareness, understanding, and access to services, resources, and benefits that impact the lives of diverse older adults, people with disabilities, family members, and caregivers, focusing on the rural areas. I'm a little behind here on this. Let's catch up. Okay. Disaster Preparedness and Services. Develop a communication strategy for disaster preparedness and response pertaining to the aging and disabilities populations with language, learning style, and grade level Health Services. Improve wait times and transportation access to healthcare specialists in rural areas for older adults and people with disabilities, starting in South Monterey County. Community Supports. Continue mobile models like the Socos, Nocos, and Sosos that are currently being hosted by Meals on Wheels of the Salinas Valley in our rural communities that positively impact isolation, access to resources, nutrition, health, and wellness, and overall quality of life for older adults, caregivers, and people with disabilities. Housing. To address the need for affordable housing for older adults and people with disabilities, promote the option of creating accessory dwelling units, ADUs, for older adult homeowners, family members, caregivers, and prospective tenants. So remember, this is just one of several recommendations in each of these areas. Outdoor Spaces. To improve accessibility and safety for older adults and people with disabilities via sidewalk and traffic control repairs and improvements, starting with the city of Salinas, to model the process for other areas. Social Participation. Increase senior programming activities, social activities, walking, exercise, and education. To improve community members' transportation access to healthcare visits through education and collaboration with local healthcare providers and community support organizations in rural areas of Monterey County, North and South County. So we saw themes throughout our survey solution summits, and then hopefully reflected in our action plan. Increase access to resources and services, particularly in rural areas. Communication that addresses diverse communities. Collaboration across sectors. Maximizing resources. And civic and social engagement opportunities. So what we're hoping that the leadership of the city, the city of Salinas, will do is to integrate the LADAP into the county, into city decisions and policies that impact the lives of older adults and people with disabilities and their families. So this presentation is being made, has been made, to the County Board of Supervisors and to the city of Greenfield, King City, Gonzalez, and Solidad. So they're all hearing the same thing, and we're all asking them to do the same thing. Promote and support civic participation opportunities for older adults and people with disabilities. And last but not least, collaborate with the senior network and other sectors in communicating information that benefits older adults and people with disabilities. So I want to thank you for your time today. Thank you for all that you do as a council, mayor, and if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. My contact information is also in the report, and I'm sure you're all going to go home and just delve through this lengthy... But it's, there's a lot of detail, and we wanted to make sure that everyone knew what work was involved, and there's going to be some accountability now because now we're in the implementation stage, and there's a lot of work to do. So we're hoping that we're going to engage you in some of that implementation as we move forward. So thank you for your time and patience in listening.
Thank you for the presentation.
You're welcome.
We appreciate that. All right. Very good. Thank you.
You're welcome. So we do have another appointment, so I hate leaving, but we do need to leave. Again, thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Mr. Donahue, good to meet you.
Good to meet you all. Thank you so much for your service.
Okay. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
All right. Before we proceed to public comment, I have an announcement to make. We've received a lot of comments from the community, both in favor and against the proposed $100,000 of the 2025 Fourth of July Celebrate American Fireworks Extravaganza recently put on at the Salinas Sports Complex by the Compass Church. By all accounts, the event was well-attended and provided a safe and family-friendly event at which the community came together to celebrate the Fourth of July and watch fireworks. I was at the event and proud to celebrate the country in this community event, and I know that other council members and their families also joined the celebration. The Compass Church should be applauded for stepping up and putting on this community event, and we want to thank them for their work. The city council wants to be sure to respect the policies and procedures it has put in place around the city sponsorship of such events that benefit the entire community. To that end, this item will be pulled from the city council's agenda and not considered tonight. The Compass Church sponsorship request will not be considered separately tonight, but will be considered through the city's existing policy and process for community sponsorships. That process will take place over the next few weeks, with sponsorship recommendations being made by city staff to the city council likely in September. We do want to thank everyone who reached out to communicate with us and share their views on this item. With that, we will proceed to public comment. Public comment this evening will be, we'll put a limit on it of 45 minutes. All comments this evening will be 90 seconds. And with that, we are open for public comment.
Good after eve, everyone. It's wonderful to see everyone back. I hope you had a wonderful break. I know you were still working, but a break nonetheless from the meetings. My name is Kimberly Bryant, and I'm here to offer a prayer over our city, over our mayor, over our city attorney, over our city manager, over our council, and over our staff of the city. It is the Lord's prayer, and if you know it, please pray along with me. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come. Thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil; for thine is the kingdom, and the power, and the glory, forever and ever. Amen.
This is so wild.
We don't speak out loud, or I'll have you removed.
I'd also like to invite all of you to come out and walk for Jesus. It is August 30th. We will be meeting at 9:30 a.m. at Sherwood Park. We will walk North Main Street. There are flyers in the back table, and all of you have a poster on your desk. Thank you so much. I appreciate each one of you.
Thank you. Okay. All right, next.
Good evening. My name is Sharon Fieldnor. Salinas and I still would like to talk on the compass, but not the money issue. I was on the gate for 14 hours. I was at Gate Four. We had people coming in starting at 3:00, and we still had people coming in at 9:15. So there were well over 15,000 people there. The people that I've read on Nextdoor that were negative said they had seen it on YouTube. That says to me they missed a good portion of it. They missed the carnivals that were on the north side. They missed the bounce houses on the south side. They missed the various platforms that were set up for bands, some of them being local. They missed the vendors that were there, those vendors making money for their families and bringing tax dollars into us. And they probably missed the food trucks, which seemed to have doubled in number this year, who are also making money and bringing in taxes. There, in this, I figured it out, and of the seven-hour event, that's 420 minutes, there were veterans that spoke. There was a patriotic band or choir that battled hymn of the Republic. That's a common song in our culture. There were a couple of other speakers. I didn't know of them because I didn't see that part. Pastor Todd spoke for about 15 to 20 minutes. That's about 20 minutes out of 420 minutes. And for these people that are saying it's a religious event, I say to you, there is absolutely nothing in our constitution that says separation of church and state. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Excuse me, gentlemen, I got the floor. I got the floor, gentlemen. Good afternoon.
We're going to let people speak. We don't speak out loud in chambers. We don't shout. We respect what people have to say. Otherwise, you'll be removed from the chambers. Proceed.
Mayor, I agree with you 100%. Hey, you know what? You're in America, land of the free. Speak your mind, speak what you want to speak, and you have that right. So if you don't like it, you guys can leave. People have a right to say what they want up here. That is why we are a democracy in the USA, baby. That's where we're at. Thank you. Welcome back, everybody. Tony, you made it back. God bless you. We'll talk about the parks, guys. The parks, I mean, no disrespect to Mr. Sandoval, who's trying to make a beautiful park in his area that's been run down for years. I agree. You deserve it. But we need to talk to Ms. Lindquist and her crew. The parks are dry and ugly and not being kept up. And it's just me. Even Code Enforcement is not going on the weekends or having jump houses everywhere and people leaving their trash everywhere, especially in Montevilla. So please, please be respectful when you come to people's parks. Pick up your garbage, take it with you. You come with a pickup, throw it in the back of your pickup. We're not your disposal service, not our park, not anybody's park. With that being said, anybody here has a problem with anybody speaking their mind, you can leave right now because we don't need that in here. This is why we have that right, because you live here. That's why we pay taxes, to express ourselves. So to the gentleman, anybody else behind me has a problem, too bad. God bless you all.
All right. Thank you. Next.
Mayor, council, thank you. I just wanted to, real quick, talk about the Fourth of July celebration in the last couple of years. Firstly, it celebrates, it's freedom of the community, and it promotes patriotism. I'm a veteran, combat veteran of Salinas, and I'm proud of the time I served. It promotes, it also highlights those who are heroes, those who served, especially those who paid ultimate sacrifice, like my nephew Edward. And he celebrated him last year, and this year, we celebrated Stephen Johnson, who was killed in Iraq as well. And it just brings everybody together, and it reinforces civic identity, and it brings everybody together. That's all I got to say. And I just want to say that it's a good thing in our community. We can't do enough to honor our veterans who promote our freedom in our country, and I respect that, and thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Hello, my afternoon. My name is Bill Freeman. I object to the city proposing giving $100,000 to Compass Church. They advertise this event as a free event, and I want $100,000 to go to Art for Kids here in Salinas. I want $100,000 to go for sports for kids here in Salinas and for music in Salinas. We should not be giving funds from our community to a church.
Thank you. Now, how does spectators support?
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council, and City Manager. I am with Montevilla Development. We met with Mr. Donahue, Mr. Mendez, and Mr. Jacobs, that I never see here. But anyways, we... So we met in January, and we were supposed to get updates and things that we met with you over the light poles, the park maintenance, and the other stuff under the rendezvous. And now it's, I think we're in August now, right? So that's been, what, eight months? And we haven't heard anything from you on the updates? Did the light poles come in? Are they ordered? Will they be here? Haven't heard from anybody. Hey, Mr. Barrera, how are you? We haven't heard from you either. So we're waiting for an answer. We paid our money last year. We haven't paid it for 15 years, but we're not getting nothing in return. You guys keep getting your salary every month, but help us out to take care of the problems that we have at Montebello. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council member. My name is Kelly Stokes, and I am a resident of Salinas. And I want to talk about community outreach in Salinas. When we moved here from the Monterey Peninsula over to this side, the very first thing that I found was how Salinas is bound together for the community. And seeing the Kidder Caper parades, and people lined up on the sidewalks like it's the 1970s, watching a parade, and they leave out their seats, and nobody touches their seats, and how Salinas is trying to build that community. And that was one thing that I fell in love with when I moved here. I was told my husband we're never going back to Monterey. This is where we need to stay. That same thing drew me into Compass Church, because when you walk in there, it doesn't matter the money in your pocketbook, doesn't matter where you live, doesn't matter what religion you are, and it doesn't, I mean, what political affiliation you have, and it doesn't matter where you came from and what your nationality is. Everybody's accepted. And one thing that I did is I got involved in their big events, because we do everything from the Christmas on Main, we do the Harvest Festival. Everything is free, except for it just got too big for us to do the food. And so when they come, it's for the kids. And so I'm just saying, we need more of that.
Thank you. Hi, Brian.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council, Councilor, Mr. Manager. My name is Brian Higgins. I am a Salinas resident and a Compass Church family member. On July 4th, the Salinas Sports Complex hosted a spectacular, family-friendly, patriotic event with an unforgettable fireworks, one that I don't think I've ever seen anything that's incredible in my life. Thousands gathered, children enjoyed safe activities, and local businesses thrived. All day, they were selling their wares to the community. The mayor gave a heartfelt speech. The Salinas schools participated. Yet some questioned the $100,000 cost to Yet some questioned the $100,000 cost to partner for this event. I guarantee at least $100,000 was saved in Salinas that day, because families were busy at this one spot. If that's a concern, if $100,000 is a concern to all of you, why did you approve a 3,000% pay increase for yourselves, which for seven of you costs significantly more than $100,000? At that time, you said it was a tiny little blip in the budget. Every year, the Rodeos Cowboy Church honors one nation under God. With rising costs canceling other events in our community, this partnership is crucial. Let's get ready for America's 250th birthday next year. I implore the City Council to build and strengthen this relationship. Thank you.
Happy World Elephant Day. My name is Eric Peterson. At the last meeting, there were some offhanded, minor comments about us paying PG&E, and I checked into it, and we're paying PG&E. Aren't we supposed to try to save money by getting our electricity from a cheaper source like Central Coast Community Energy? We're part of Central Coast Community Energy. And just in case those payments were forgotten, there are also lower-cost purveyors than PG&E. And in the interest of full disclosure, I've got stock in PG&E. Thank you.
Thanks, Eric.
Hello, and good evening. I want to thank the mayor, and the city manager, and the city attorney for pulling the Compass Church $100,000 gift off the agenda. That's what I asked for in the email. I'm glad you did that. Now, in consideration of the regular general application, $50,000 is the most any nonprofit can ask for. So my view on this, while Compass Church's Celebration America event may have included secular actions, its core was unmistakably religious. The evening patriotic service features sermons, Christian music, and messaging from church leadership. It's not just a celebration of national pride, it's a platform for religious expression. Public funds must never be used to underwrite programming that promotes a specific faith, no matter how well-intended or entertaining the event may be. Salinas is a diverse city, and taxpayer dollars must reflect that diversity, not subsidize a church's outreach efforts. By funding this event, the city risks crossing constitutional line and alienating residents who deserve a truly inclusive celebration. Let's honor the Fourth of July in a way that unites all, not one that privileges a single religious voice.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Saad. I'm a resident of District 3. I was raised here in Salinas. I'm here to talk about Compass Church and the consideration of giving 100K to the church for a program. When there is a community sponsorship policy in place, that policy limits, as the previous speaker said, the amount to any applicant to 50,000. The current budget for this fiscal year is 150,000. So if the funds are taken from that source, that leaves only $50,000 for the rest of the applicants, which in the previous fiscal year was over 40 applicants and close to $2 million that were applied to. But only 100 to 150,000, I can't remember the number, were dispersed to those who followed the policy. Compass Church has also applied in the past and has gone on 15,000. So they are aware of the policy that is in place. I don't understand why this is in consideration when they're not following the policy, when all this money, if it is used, will be, and it is taken from the community sponsorship funds, will affect all those other applicants who also apply to this program. The other sources that were identified as potentially are from the general funds, two different general funding sources, including reserves. So will that affect the maintenance, so potholes and other projects that the city has?
Thank you.
I would also like to comment on the Compass Church funding issue. You all know it would be wrong to give Compass Church this money, because Compass Church did not follow the process to apply for this funding, while 37 other organizations did. The firework program included religious content that directly violates the city's policy, that they will not award public money to any religion, church, creed, sectarian organization to promote religious purposes. Documentation shows that city council members' personal businesses had investment in this event, and that the 100K was pre-promised to Compass Church without community oversight or input. It is out of touch and insulting to use funding allocated to youth and senior programming for 2026 to retroactively pay for a firework event that did not address the most pressing needs of our youth and seniors in this community: stable and affordable housing, food security, and immigration protection and rights, to name a few. This council and mayor should be ashamed of themselves for mismanaging taxpayer dollars in this way, and it makes me wonder what other funds are being mismanaged by this group. If you didn't already understand my message, this is public comment. Stop treating the city budget as your own personal coin purse. You all were elected to serve the public and not your own special interests. A vote for yes for the $100,000 for the firework event will demonstrate to the people that you are only here to better your own life and network, and not the lives of the Salinas city residents.
Thank you.
They're making outside commentary, okay? First and foremost, Allah hu Akbar, okay? Let's have some religious tolerance, yeah? Allah hu Akbar. Allah hu Akbar, one more time. All right, thank you for tabling it. Really appreciate you guys. Trust will be paying attention for when it comes back, all right? I love this engagement, don't you? Okay. And talking about religious tolerance, I'm gonna read a chapter, a passage from Matthew 21, 12 to 13. "Jesus entered the temple courts and drove out all who were buying and selling there. He overturned the tables of the money changers and the benches of those selling doves. It is written, he said to them, 'My house will be called the house of prayer, but you are making it a den of robbers.'" So I love that passage. I'm not even a Christian, but I just love that passage, because let's keep church in separate states. So thank you for tabling it, and I just want to say, personally, this is just a general comment, the drop-off in the pickup at Everett Alvarez High School is ridiculous. I don't know what we gotta do to fix it. I see people parked in the no-parking lane, and they're double parked in the no-parking lane, which is really dangerous to bicyclists, to the bus people, to pedestrians. So I don't know what you guys gotta do, but can we please fix the pickup at Everett Alvarez High School? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
The $100,000 should be diverted to youth programs, especially mental health programs. There's been an increase in diagnosis ranging from generalized anxiety to major depressive disorders. Compass Church, like many churches, are tax-exempt. The agency I work for makes every cent count. Shame on you. Thank you for tabling.
City Mayor, Councilmembers, City Attorney, City Manager, Yolanda Hayes from Creek Bridge. I have to say, I double-dip, because I belong to both churches, so I'm kind of in the middle of this. I do believe that the money should be divided among the projects that we really need. There's a lot of projects that are going, are not being addressed, and I think they should be addressed with that money. But I'm really here tonight because of Gaveling Creek. I'm really, I really need your help. I'm really concerned that in the seven years that I've been working with this project, it's just getting worse. We, I went for a walk this week with, in the creek. We found about anywhere from 10 to 15 unhoused people living there, or camps, living in the creek. There were tents within the tents. There was, we saw maybe about 10 people there, all healthy young men, and it was during the week, so they weren't working. What were they doing there in the middle of the day? These individuals must be removed. I understand that they also cut the sprinkler system. That's messing around with city property, and that should not be allowed. They're starting fires every week in the creek, yet nothing gets done about it. If they were removed, we could solve the issue, so please, please help me. Thank you.
Thank you, Yolanda.
Good evening, City Council, Mayor. This morning, I sent you all an email regarding the $100,000 for Compass Church. I want to thank Councilmember Salazar and Sandoval for acknowledging receipt of my email to you guys. $100,000 to Compass Church is just ridiculous. It's not okay that the city is subsidizing an advertisement for a religious organization. I understand that there were religious speakers at the firework event, religious music. I'm very, very happy that there is an organization in town that provides an opportunity for the community to get together. I went ahead and took a look at Compass Church's Instagram page, and it looks like they had over 14,000 people at their event. That's great. Love community events. But the city is not responsible for subsidizing this church's advertising. It's not okay. This church, on their website, prioritizes above all else converting non-Christians to Christianity, and it's not okay for the city to be giving money to this church for their event, despite whatever happy memories it provides to the people of Salinas. It's just not justified. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, good evening, City Council. My name's Eloise Shim. I do also want to comment about the Compass Church thing. It's not so much the $100,000 that is being spent, because I did go to the event, and I saw that, you know, it's a nice event, and they had security there, and the fireworks. It was a good community event. However, Pastor Todd did showcase two events, historical events, that have to do with Islam, 9/11, and the Boston bombings, and showcased that as, you know, we have to be together as Americans and as Christians, and not together with that group. So I have to remind you that the United States Constitution and the First Amendment says freedom of religion. And I also have to remind you that you took an oath to uphold the United States religion, the United States Constitution. So if you're saying that the city of Salinas is an evangelical Christian city, that is not upholding the United States Constitution.
Thank you.
Buenas tardes, alcalde, concejales, y todos los presentes. Mi nombre es María Chávez. Vivo Distrito 4. Apoya la Escuelita Involucramiento Cívico. No se les olvide que la comunidad necesitamos mejoras en las calles, banquetas, parques, y tenemos que esperar años. Donde yo vivo por años tenemos la prostitución, tráfico de carros y choques. Por un tiempo se calma, pero sigue y más feo. Las calles son inseguras y peligrosas, ya que estamos en constante peligro los que vivimos allí, y más por las noches. Ya que las calles están muy oscuras, necesitamos de luces y cámaras en el estadio de Roosevelt y Madeira. Nos sentimos solos, que nadie nos escucha, ya que hemos entregado firmas. Se hizo una marcha. Las noticias han hecho reportajes sobre esto. Hemos venido a hablar aquí, en el concilio, entregado fotos de choques y nada. Ya no hablamos a la policía, porque no tiene caso. Mientras están allí, las servidoras se esconden o se van. Y cuando ellos se van, los policías salen y se burlan de ellos. Entre vecinos hablamos, y nos queremos ir a vivir a otro lugar por este problema. Pero no podemos. Hay muchas cosas que nos impiden irnos, principalmente el dinero que necesitamos para mudarnos. Estamos con mucho miedo, sufrimiento, y mucho, y más nuestros hijos y nietos. Gracias.
Good afternoon. My name is María Chávez. And good afternoon, City Mayor, Council. I'm from District 4. And I'm also with the Escuelita for Civic Engagement. And I want to tell you that because we need a lot of improvement. We need improving in our parks, in our benches, and we have to wait and wait. We have asked for this for so long. We have come here and talked to you about the cars that crashed near our house, true, and about the prostitutes that are there. True, it improves for a while, but then it gets bad again. Our streets are dark, and they're dangerous. And we need a cross street or a light in Roosevelt and Madeira. We have come here. We have showed you pictures. We have marched the news. We have brought reports, and it's, everything is the same. We don't even call the police anymore, because it's useless. When the police come, the prostitute just hide. And when the police leaves, they come out, and they make fun of the police. So all of us, all of the neighbors, say that we want to live in another place, but we can't. We just can't move, because we don't have the money to be able to move from where we're living, and it is getting very dangerous for our children to live in such dark and dangerous streets. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and City Councilmembers. My name is Susana Barrios, the youth organizer for the Center for Community Advocacy. And over the eight, over the past eight years, CCA has had the immense pleasure of engaging more than 7,000 residents over the years through the various phases of the project for the development of a new park in Salinas, now known as Ensign Community Park. The many years of community engagement and input have led to what we have highly anticipating, the inauguration of the Ensign Community Park. It is now with a lot of enthusiasm that we are happy to share that the park will be holding an inauguration for its opening on Sunday, August 17, 2025, from 11:00 to 3:00 p.m. at 99 La Posada Drive, including a ribbon-cutting ceremony at 12:30 p.m. We, Center for Community Advocacy, Big Sur Land Trust, and the City of Salinas would like to invite all residents from Salinas, as well as you all, city council members and mayor, to join us in this celebration of the amazing work the community has invested in the development over the years. Also, a big thank you to all the residents and organizations that have been engaged in the process. Big Sur Land Trust for investing in the community, and the City of Salinas for the acquisition of the park. I hope you are able to join us. I will also follow up with each of you via email to confirm your attendance. Thank you for your time and consideration, and I'll also be leaving a flyer for each of you. So thank you.
Good evening. My name's Gunther. I wasn't expecting to come up here. I just wanted to get involved in the, with the city again, just to make a difference. But sitting here and hearing this with the church, you know, we know it all really starts from, you know, it starts at the cord, from the head. And to think that $150,000 for Salinas, just $150,000 to work with, I'm sure there's millions. And if you did take a 30% raise, you really should be ashamed for doing that. I believe everybody deserves a 30% raise, so equally for everyone. So we have to find a church that does something good for the community, and we gotta knock it down. You know, it's just, we need to work together. And we did build this country on God's word. It was God's word that built this country, and we all look to do the best we can. And I'm against promoting anything that's evil, you know? And anything that brings harmony to this town needs to be promoted. You know, and $150,000, I'm sure there's much more money that was out there. You know, we're talking about $150,000. Somebody's pockets are getting filled up, you know? And it's pretty pathetic. But the time is coming, real soon.
Thank you.
Good evening, Councilmembers, City Attorney and City Manager. My name is Dr. Lourdes Solorio. I've been a resident of Salinas since 1986. And I worked at Nativity Ad- And I worked at Nativity Ave for 30 years. I'm also born and raised in Hollister, so I kind of feel I'm from here. Church and state seem to be melding at every level of government in our country. It is not clear to me why a private religious organization would take money from all of the residents of Salinas to pay for an event after the event has occurred. Was there a promise made by the City Council to reimburse Compass Church prior to the event? Since so many influential people belong to Compass Church, do they have undue influence over city government? I urge you to keep church and state as separate entities. The previous pastor at Compass Church made comments about Michigan Governor Gretchen Whitmire and the Director of the Los Angeles Department of Public Health in a derogatory fashion during the COVID pandemic. These comments aligned perfectly with the Trump administration at the time. As a doctor, friends who attend Compass Church asked me to review the comments, which I did on YouTube, on the YouTube recording. I heard the comments firsthand. At a time when the immigrants in Salinas, who support the biggest industry in the county, are living in fear, we should not condone actions such as the one you are considering tonight. Please do not follow the national trend at overlooking the separation of church and state. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hello, everybody. David Mason of District 3. You know, first I want to apologize to everybody. I had answered on Neighborhood, a certain answer about separation of church and state that... I don't, I don't really believe in the separation of church and state. I believe that it's, it's the government cannot dictate what religion we have, but it doesn't mean we take God out of the picture. God is still part of who we are as a country. I just have some random thoughts here. I was listening to everybody and... So did the city make a promise to the church prior to the Fourth of July? If we, if we did, we need to, we need to honor that promise. The other one is the amount of illegal fireworks seemed to be much less this year. I live in South Salinas, and it was last year, I thought we were in a war zone. And it went on until 2:00 in the morning and later. And this time it didn't. That could have been a good, really good thing. I guess $100,000 isn't wisely spent. Well, you take God out of the picture and you just look at the event itself. What did it do? It brought people together. It gave people something to do. And it reduced, I'm guessing it reduced some of the fire department's issues. Thank you.
Thanks, David.
Buenas tardes a todos que presentes. Good evening, everyone here present and outside of this space, right? Because as we know, not everyone can physically be here or even tune in through Zoom, right? But my name is Diana Carrasco, born, raised here in Salinas. While at the same time, you know, mi gente and my people, we're from everywhere, right? So, este, transcending borders, verdad? So with that, I'm just here to like, like echo some of the sentiments and facts that have already been presented, verdad? What was, I, I got to see a clip of a previous meeting with, with you, Donna Hugh, where you were, you closed off the remark by saying, somewhere in the Constitution, the founding fathers said that it's our duty to celebrate with fireworks. And that like, you know, hmm, yeah, sparks went off, right? Because what that reminded me was like even, you know, Mount Rushmore, which has the like figures of founding fathers and whatnot, that, so that mountain was actually, you know, its ancestral land, right? And I remembered hearing that that's, that mountain actually represents the six grandfathers of the indigenous peoples of that land, of that territory. And so I bring that up because, well, you know, that... Oh, okay.
Thank you.
I'll follow up with the written comment.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. My name is June Gracia. And I'm one of the Deacons now in Compass Church of Salinas, Monterey County. It's a nonprofit organization dedicated to continue to support a family-oriented and patriotic celebration. As a family of military, my father served as United States Army. And my son right now is currently serving as an officer in the United States Navy, and he flies the F-18 Super Hornets right now. My daughter-in-law, my son's wife's also a US Navy. I was sitting on the stand on the Fourth of July celebration, and I was seated in an officer, Navy, Army officer, and they're from New York. And they said that Salinas is one of the best, you know, city that celebrates and honoring all of the, all of the veterans. And they said it was when, he was here from New York as a, as a training. He flew his family over here. And they did enjoy everything that, you know, that they saw down the Fourth of July. I'm asking and seeking the support and the contribution of the $100,000 for, for the fireworks, you know? Please, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Hello, everybody. My name is Maria. I am a Salinas resident, born and raised here. And I just wanted to say that our city's own sponsorship policy clearly prohibits the awarding of public funds for any church or religious organization or for religious purposes. Rectoactively funding this event not only violates that policy, but it also undermines the bedrock principle of separation of church and state. Compass Church asserts that the funds are strictly for firework and public safety, not religious programming. But who determines where that line truly lies? Once we cross it, even small compromises can pave the way to much larger ones. We risk favoring one religious group over another, potentially excluding residents whose beliefs and tax dollars are equally real and equally worth protecting. Moreover, $100,000 expenditure, especially on a retroactive basis, raises deep questions about fiscal responsibility. We must prioritize forward-looking, equitable, and transparent budgeting, not patch-up of past events with taxpayer dollars. Our city is a diverse tapestry of beliefs and identities. The right course is clear: reject the sponsorship, uphold our policy, safeguard our constitutional principles, and commit to a budget that serves every resident regardless of faith.
Thank you.
Mary Ann Horton, I hope you enjoyed your vacation this summer, because I enjoyed mine. I went to Portugal. Anyway, I am very upset. Thursday, I received a phone call from the Public Works Department about an item that should have been, they should have known about over a year ago. And that was when I was trying to add a room to my home. They told me I had to take care of all these things in my place, which I have. And none of that was because of my husband and I, it was because the business we had, and my son's died, and we had to bring all that home. So I had to get rid of all of that by myself. I've done it. And the city planning people knew I had done it, and they had called me and asked if I was still going to add on to my room. And I says, no, my husband passed away. I didn't need to add my room. That was over a year ago. I got a phone call on my way home from my doctor's office in San Francisco. That was taken care of. And now I'm still getting a phone call, asking if I still have complied with all the things they had wanted. They should have known that over a year ago. Someone down there does not do the job they should have been doing. I tell you all the time, the left hand does not know what the right hand's doing. And I was on our Fourth of July thing way back, and we did not pay $100,000 for fireworks. I know that for a fact. My sons worked on it. Thank you.
We have about seven minutes left for public comment, so anyone who's going to speak needs to get in line.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Ignacio Fragoso. And I just wanted to say that I recently attended an event where our mayor was in, was there present alongside other mayors from our county. And essentially, they went on to talk about economical growth, especially economical growth through a lot of the agricultural operations that we conduct here in our area. I also wanted to mention that there's a certain agricultural institution that is trying to obtain or potentially has obtained political lobbying, even up into the federal level, in terms of receiving federal subsidies for a lot of the agricultural operations and outputs that we produce here in our area. I've said it in the past, I am an individual that believes in capitalism and a free market. Essentially, free market for me is the number one source of reducing poverty in any societal structure in our, in any community. So with that being said, you know, essentially, when we subsidize certain private institutions, we reduce the cost of production, and essentially, the cost of the output is reduced, so we tend to create surpluses. So with that being said, I'd like to ask a rhetorical question, and I'd like to hear an answer to the argument that someone in agriculture may make, that essentially farmers and thus potentially the general public are at a disadvantage with farm subsidies because essentially, an urban-oriented Congress has figured out how to use farm subsidies to increase domestic production far and above of what the free market would have dictated. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Mayor and City Councilmen. My name is Jasmine Martinez, and I am here to speak on behalf of the $100,000 for Compass Church. I just want to say that this event is so wonderful to our community. It brought together, you know, you guys as council members, and also the, the police were there, the news and the firefighters, as well as more than 60 vendors. So it also helps the community in that way for local businesses. And what has been brought up before is that allocation of funds. If that is the issue, then just providing the invoice directly to the City Council so they can see what the funds are being allocated towards to help with this issue that keeps happening with the community and how they are, you know, just wanting to ask where these particular funds are going toward. Not the event being any type of religious statement, but for the community itself to just continue having a wonderful opportunity for everyone in the community to come together, together, and just also just the public safety that was noted, that the police even themselves didn't have to go for more fires started in the community because everyone was there at the rodeo and those partnerships as well, as well as with the agricultural community and those companies. So it's a really positive event in Salinas, and I am for providing that next year to support the 250-year anniversary of the city. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right. Whoever, just before we go, just whoever's in line, that, that will be the... We'll take everyone in line, and then we will proceed with the rest of the agenda.
Good afternoon, everyone present. My name is Virginia H. Mendoza. He, he tenido el honor de trabajar con la ciudad de Morelia, Michoacán, México, for a few years. Oh, no, that's okay. I can do it in English. Okay, okay. Lo voy, no, todo digo en español, tú lo traduces. He estado trabajando con la ciudad de Morelia, Michoacán, por algunos años ya, y he estado trabajando en diferentes aspectos con un grupo de amigos. Estamos aquí pidiéndole a la ciudad de Salinas que nos apoye, porque después de tantos años está trabajando y algunos proyectos que creemos que se va a beneficiar la ciudad de Salinas, haciendo la ciudad de Morelia, Michoacán, Ciudad de Hermana con Salinas, California. Les dejé un poquito de información. Espero que todos la hayan recibido. Si alguien faltó, aquí tengo uno extra. Muchas gracias.
So, good afternoon. I have been working a few years with Morelia for several years and several, with many friends. And I have a lot of projects that I have shared with the City Council that I think that can be very beneficial for the, for Salinas. And I think that we can make Morelia a sister city. I have here all the information. If you want to have more, I have copies, and I am more than happy to share with you all the benefits that this can bring. Thank you.
Okay.
Buenas tardes, señor alcalde. Buenas tardes, miembros del Concilio. Soy Jesús Verdusco. Vivo en el Distrito 3. Y quiero decir que en este distrito hacen falta pintar los cruces en las calles. Esto y un poco más se puede hacer con parte del dinero que se estaría donando a una iglesia en el sur de Salinas. Muchas gracias.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. My name is Jesús Verdusco, and I'm from District 3. And I want to say that there's a lot of things that we need in District 3. One of them is that we have to paint some cross streets and other things. But all of this we can do instead of giving donations to a church that is in the south side of Salinas. Thank you.
Thank you.
Buenas tardes, Concilio y alcalde. Mi nombre es Nidia Soto. Soy organizadora de Building Healthy Community, organizadora de la Justicia Económica. Estoy aquí para hablar sobre el patrocino de los 100,000 dólares a la Iglesia Compass para los fuegos artificiales, celebrando América el 4 de julio 2025, un evento ya pasado. Estos, esto es verdaderamente una mala decisión de distribución de fondos. Mientras que Salinas enfrenta muchas peoridades, esta cantidad será deducida al presupuesto correspondiente asignado del, a fondo general, saldo que reducirá los fondos disponibles para iniciar el año fiscal, que todavía, todavía ni se inicia. Recuerdo una pregunta en la encuesta pasada para elaborar el presupuesto fiscal y decía, si tuvieras 100,000 dólares, ¿qué proyecto o programa financiarías? La comunidad presentó tres áreas específicas: obras públicas, desarrollo comunitario, bibliotecas y servicios para la comunidad. Y una de las áreas que enfrentó realmente la necesidad tan grande es programas para primeros compradores de vivienda. Y ustedes están tratando de hacer una decisión de 100,000 dólares en un dos por tres? So hagan la mejor decisión para su comunidad que representan.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council. My name is Nidia Soto, and I'm an organizer with BHC and for Economic Justice. And I'm here because I want to talk about the $100,000 that was given to Compass Church for the celebration of Fourth of July and the fireworks for 2025. These funds were given, they invested in these funds, and these funds were taken away from the general budget. These funds could have been invested in what the community or the city needs. I remember that when we were planning the budget and we were forming the budget, one of the questions that they asked was, what would you do if you had $100,000? And a lot of people answered that they would do public works, economic development, libraries, everything for the community. And another thing that was very, that a lot of the community mentioned is a program for first buyers. But that money wasn't invested in that, it was invested in, in the church. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Olga Reyna. I belong to District 4. And I live close to a very dangerous intersection. It's Granada and Laurel. Laurel is a very, very busy street. There are a lot of students crossing that street to and from school. There's a lot of traffic in that intersection. And a few years ago, one of my neighbors got hit, got killed right there on the very spot. It continues to be a very, a very dangerous intersection. I would hope that some of that money that you're trying to allocate to this fireworks display would be given to intersections that makes Salinas streets safer for all of our residents. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. This will be the last, last public comment.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. On the first day of school, my daughters came home and I asked them, what did you learn today? I expected to hear about a book, a math game, a new friend. Instead, the very first thing they said was, we can win prizes if we raise money for this school. this school." Before they even cracked a textbook, the first message that they got was, "Your school needs money, and you need to help get it." Now we're here talking about giving $100,000 of public funds to an organization for fireworks. This is James. For an event that happened over a month ago. This is not responsible budgeting, and public money should not be used as retroactive bailout. For the same amount, we could fully fund new playground equipment for three elementary schools, provide 500 kids with sports scholarships, hire part-time art and music teachers for an entire year at two schools that currently don't have them, create a free after-school STEM club in every public library, purchase 10,000 new books. We could go on and on. I believe Compass Church is a great organization, and I'm sure they did a lot of great things. I'm sure that the, the community loved the project. I love seeing families together, and I love the 4th of July, but it's just not the best use of taxpayer money, especially when there's so many pressing needs for our kids and neighborhoods go unmet. Coming back after it's over to request $100,000 more is essentially asking the city to cover the bill after the fact, and also childcare would be nice, too.
Very good.
Thanks for the talk, guys.
That applause is deserved and allowed, so, all right. Very good. Well, before you go, can you come back again on August 26th? I think we'd like to, we'd like to have you. All right. Do Zoom, Zoom public comments? Uh, let's see, what do we got on Zoom? I, I have...
Yeah, I limited to 45 minutes, so we're done.
Yeah, no, it was 45 minutes. Yeah, no, we went past it, so I went to 50, so. Public comment was limited to 45 minutes this go-around, so we will proceed with the administrative reports, and Sophie, you are up.
Prior to that, Mayor, if I may, we need to do the Levine Act disclosure.
Okay.
So, Mayor and councilmembers, with respect to the Levine Act, do any members have any campaign contributions to disclose related to any item on tonight's agenda? Councilmember Barajas?
No.
Councilmember Barrera?
No.
Councilmember De Arigo?
No.
Councilmember De La Rosa?
Absent.
Councilmember Salazar?
No.
Councilmember Sandoval?
No.
And Mayor Donahue?
No.
With that, we are going to hear about the Turner Scholar Intern Program.
Hi, good evening. Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. So my name is Sophia Rome, Community Relations Manager, and I had the honor of leading the group of young interns that we have behind us. One of our interns weren't able to make it, but this is the second year that we were fortunate to be selected to participate in the ICMA Turner Scholar Internship Program. And just a little, a little bit of background, so our first year last year, we brought on four amazing youth interns that brought forward a lot of really amazing projects that we're now seeing come to fruition, like our youth council. And this year, we were fortunate enough to, to bring on six young individuals, rising senior, two seniors this year, and then four that are going off to college doing really amazing things. So a little overview of the program. The Turner Scholar Intern Program is really built to bring more awareness to local government. It serves as a mentoring program and a networking program for young individuals to really inspire the next generation of local leaders and then future success, really giving youth the opportunity and skills to set them on the right path as they continue their, their education and their, and their careers and look to serve their community in local government or in partnership with their local government. In addition to the service projects and the different projects that they focused on for the city of Salinas, they also were required to work with a cohort of interns from across the country. So we were one of five cities that were selected to participate in the program, and we had the largest group of, of youth interns. So you can see, they, they were divided into groups, and they worked with their, with the other interns from across, across the country on different public service announcements for ICMA. So now I'm going to turn it over to the youth, so you can get an update on what they've been working on.
Good evening. Sorry. My name is Nayala Gil Silva, and I'm a senior at Alisal High School. So as, as part of our internship, we had to come up with a service project to give back to our community. So me and Natalia worked together on a donation drive project. So we met with the SORT team, and we talked about like the most necessities that the unhoused community needs, and they said hygiene products and pet food. So that's what we did. We made different flyers, and we put different bins up around the city, and it was a great turnout. We had hundreds of items donated, and we made them into kits and gave them back to the SORT team to give out.
Hi, everyone. My name is Natalia Travis, and I am a senior at Salinas High School. So for me, what my project was, was small business and economic development. So I really wanted to incorporate social media through, to promote businesses in Salinas. So some things that we did was, we went out ourselves and go and to promote those businesses, and we posted about it on social media. Here's some examples of here. We celebrated Taco Tuesday at some restaurants, and we also visited some produce stores, which this second post got a lot of traction, and it was really, really good for the small business. Along with that, I worked on two surveys. The first one was about a small, a summer small business where it had eight categories, and people in Salinas had to choose what their favorite small business was for each category. It was a great turnout. It got over 150 responses, and we got a lot of positive feedback. And right now, we're currently posting a series on social media of all of the categories and all the places that got highlighted. Along with that, we have a survey, it's not out yet, but I'm hoping it comes out soon. It's for economic development, and it is what's on your business wish list. I hope that everybody will be able to have the chance to fill it out. It's a great opportunity to help see what everybody would want in Salinas' future, so thank you.
So my other project was on the Williams Road project that is coming to Williams Road. So my, my project was to find out different outreach strategies to inform the community about this project that is going to come, since I know a lot of people don't really know much about it. So I made different flyers, that's an infographic, and then I also made slideshow presentations to post on social media like Instagram. So we target more like the audience, like, for example, Alisal, like high schoolers, or like any businesses on that street. I also made them in English and in Spanish, because a lot of our community is, speaks a lot of Spanish in that, you know, in that area. Some of my recommendations were to connect more with our community members in that area, also like businesses on that street, so they know what's coming, because it's going to be a lot, a lot of infrastructure, it's going to take a lot of time and a lot of roadwork, so.
Hello, City Councilmembers. My name is Ricardo, and I was tasked over my internship on bicycling safety with an emphasis on helmet usage. So over my time in the internship, I created an audit that would look over the helmets being used across, by bicycles being used across the variety of the areas in Salinas, the east, north, south, and west sides. And as you can see, I also developed some routes that would be easily accessible and to, to perform future researches for our PD, which supports grants for future bicycling safety. And I also helped do an education campaign for families, since, you know, families are what, influence their children, so hopefully, they would be encouraged to wear their helmets in the future as well. Thank you so much.
I'm Andrea Legasca. I just graduated from Norrada High School. And in the beginning of this internship, Kayla, who is another intern who unfortunately cannot be here today, Kayla and I were interviewed and selected to work alongside the Fire Administration Department. And together, we created a project called the Fire Safety Calendar. And our initiative, the foundation of this initiative, the purpose of it was to ensure the safety and well-being of our community, which is why we made sure to make the flyers both in English and Spanish. So the calendar is comprised of 12 infographics that we, that we created. So we're covering different topics such as fire safety, fire prevention, fire education, and more. Our main resources were the National Fire Protection Association, along with the fire, the Salinas Fire Department website. And some topics we touched upon were just like general fire safety tips, like inspecting your homes, making sure you check your wires, smoke detectors, making sure you have a fire safety plan, especially for homes with children, and more. Another thing we focused on was fireworks season, which led to us creating a bunch of posts and flyers and more infographics about just reminding the community to use safe and sane fireworks, and just some tips on how to do like proper firework disposal or the well-being of our community. And we would both just like to thank you for this opportunity and for your time.
Hello and good evening, everyone. My name is Jocelyn Garcia, and I just graduated from Ever Alvarez High School. So based on my project that I researched was on Measure G, it was to basically expand communication strategies in order to increase public awareness on projects and services in our community. Some of the recreational centers that Measure G does fund is the Caesar Travis Soccer Field, the Caesar Travis Trails, Sherwood Tennis Centers, and the North Gate Dog Park, and et cetera, as well as the public safety, including police, fire, emergency responders, and also, et cetera, along with my colleagues, Nayali and everyone else. We gather information on how other cities have educated their community about the plan through email, social media pages, and city websites, focusing on the, the community plan on educational campaigns from Nevada City and the City of Napa. And in Nevada City, from Nevada City, I conducted research from them, was that they, they created educational campaigns with the communities, highlighting the recreational facilities that was funded under Measure G, such as community centers, parks, and also listed public safety resources offered for the public, including police departments, fire departments, and emergency responders, and also human resources, and finance, and et cetera. What I found from Napa was that they decayed their educational efforts from creating a branding on Measure G logo, plevished their website under their city page where residents could access educational information and learn about these facilities that are supportive of staying informed about projects on Measure G. Based on this research, what I would recommend for the city of Salinas is to use a consistent Measure G logo, which also that I designed with my fellow colleagues, to market any facility or program funded by the measure, such as recreational centers or public safety initiatives. I also suggested creating an article page or website, along with a newsletter to share educational information and updates and resource, so residents can easily see how Measure G impacts our community. Thank you. Now, we would like to thank the city of Salinas for your amazing support and contributions to the city, and also ICMA for this wonderful opportunity. And especially, I'm also, we will all like to thank Sophia Rome for guiding us towards our goals, and as well as for guiding us to get where we are today and to be more involved with the community. Thank you. We would like to be open with any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. All right. Any questions from council? Margaret?
I have a question for the gentleman. I'm sorry, I didn't write your name down, but did you find a lot of adults out of compliance for wearing bike helmets?
Actually, the majority of adults were not wearing helmets. Even though it is legal for adults to not wear helmets, it was still quite of a shock to see that adults, those who influenced the youth, were not wearing helmets, and it's kind of shocking.
Thank you. That's exactly what I wanted to hear. We're supposed to set the example. Thank you.
Where are they?
No, same question, just wanted to know about the, about the helmets and how we're doing citywide. Thank you very much.
Jose?
I do have two questions. And this one's, if I could just have each one of the interns, this will be like a quick, like 30-second, because there's several of you, okay? So two questions. So A, what misconception did you have before going into the censorship about city or local government, and how did it change? And the second one is, what can we do to improve the internship for next year's interns?
Hi. One misconception I think I had was, I didn't think I was going to be able to be as creative as I was given the ability to, and I think Sophie really helped with that, but I got to be really creative and be able to put my spin on things, which I really appreciated. And then, well, can you repeat the second question, please?
What can we do to improve this internship next year?
I felt like it was a really good internship, like just my personal thing. I really enjoyed every piece of it. I mean, maybe longer lunches, but that's all I can really think of right now. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
The common misconception I had, I, well, I don't know if it was like a misconception, but I didn't think we were going to have as much like, not like freedom, but like, I didn't think we were going to like be able to do as much as we can, we did, like, like what I did, like telling her, like my feedback, like I didn't think it would be that, like, connected to you guys and stuff, like, I don't know if that makes sense. And then, what can be better? I really, I really enjoyed the internship. Like Natalia said, maybe longer lunches or breaks. I loved, we went on like walks on our 15-minute breaks.
Awesome. Thank you.
I feel like the biggest misconception for me was probably like how difficult it is to implement something. I came in thinking that like, oh, you think of something, you try to put it in, and it's just as simple as that, but there's a whole process behind it, and I was just shocked. I was fooled, dude. I was like, wow, okay, so you actually had to wait three years to get this done. Something I would probably change, actually, I don't really have any changes. This internship was so amazing, it was honestly really fun. I got to meet really nice people, and it was an overall great experience, so thank you so much for everything.
Thank you.
I kind of just agree with everyone else. I think the biggest misconception was kind of thinking about what the city can and cannot do. There were so many things, like there were so many guidelines we had to follow, you're not allowed to like be too persuasive on this, or you're not allowed to lean one way or the other. Like Ricardo said, there's a whole process for things, like a lot of time and money, and the efforts of so many people go behind each thing. And for the second question about what we can do to make it better, I can't really think of anything. I, I mean, I kind of stuck in the lunches, but I think everything else was great. It was, I love that we were paired up, and I got to work with another intern, and it was really fun to just kind of put our minds together, and I agree with other people that we had like a lot of creative freedom than I, than I thought we would initially, and it was really nice to like work with the people we did and have like our voices be heard and like implemented. Thank you.
Thank you.
One misconception about, I would say about this internship or just government in general, I would agree also with my fellow colleagues as well, that it takes a lot of like, of a process, and you have to follow guidelines in order to publicize anything that you want for the community to promote, I guess you could say, or to implement in our city as well. I would say, one thing, I honestly couldn't, wouldn't have changed anything for this internship or wouldn't want anything to change. It was really amazing. I really got the opportunity to collab, not only just collaborate, but to also meet other people as well from other states and collaborate with them on projects and learn about, more about the government's policies and how like their strategies and function works, which is something that I didn't know. So I would say I would never change anything about this internship, maybe, yeah, just the lunch hours that everyone else is saying, but, but yeah, but thank you so much.
Thank you. Those are my questions, Mayor.
Tony? Okay, Andrew? Yeah, my, my question is for Ms. Garcia. How many people do you think actually know what Measure G is? So this, you, you worked on Measure G, so how many people do you think actually know what Measure G is?
Honestly, a lot of people don't know about Measure G. I can't give like an exact percentage to you, but like when I would talk about it, especially with like some of my family members, they had no clue what Measure G was. So I was the one that had to basically inform them, like what Measure G was, that it's on, like when you're voting, that Measure G is on there to improve like these recreational facilities and also this public safety. So this is basically what I'm trying, I want to do for my project, or I guess my plan, is to basically educate people more about it, because when I was doing my research, a lot of people don't understand the concept of Measure G or how it, it really does impact our community, and yeah, that's it. Thank you.
So on a, on a scale of 1 to 100, how important is Measure G?
Oh, I would say 10, very, or 100.
100, yeah. A hundred, yeah.
Yeah, I don't know.
Yes. When, when the youth speaks, the community should listen, I just want to say that. So thank you very much, I love all your ideas.
Yeah.
Especially about the logo, the Measure G information.
Yeah.
And I think that that's, I, I'm glad that you're excited about Measure G, because there are not a lot of people who get excited about it, but it really improves the quality of life.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Andrew. Okay. Um, all right. Um, any public comment on, on this?
Hi, good afternoon, Garcia, Ramon, Montevideo Community. I, I think it's great to get the youth involved, because um, a lot of people that get involved in politics are, are pretty much already in their 40s or 50s, and to get somebody straight out of high school, that's pretty good, or even in high school. I mean, I didn't get involved till what, four years ago? And I really hate politics, I think it's, it's just not for me. I mean, it's, it's a lot of bickering and complaining and that's all people do, and that's what you got to understand, though. You have to listen, everybody up here, and take everything they say and, and use it to where you can turn it and make everybody see what you're trying to build. That's the hardest thing about politics. And that's good, that we have young people that are engaged, ready to serve this community. We need more people like that, and we don't have them. We have all the older people, my age and, and, you know, younger, some of them, they can't even come to a meeting. I mean, come on, guys, you want to get involved and you want to complain and bicker and, but you don't want to come and support anybody. Where's everybody at? See, they just had the compass thing done and everybody's gone. That's all, there's no support. You have to keep everybody engaged, that's the number one thing. And freedom of speech is great. God bless everybody.
Thank you.
Good evening again, name is Eric Peterson, and I'd like to thank the whole group, this was just fabulous. Uh, and in particular, though, I, as you, nobody's going to be surprised, bicycle helmets, very much needed. Um, you go a place like Palo Alto, and all the kids are wearing helmets, and you get a lot more, it's a cultural thing almost. And um, as many know, I've had friends and who've been killed seriously, injured in bicycle crashes, and it's no fun. And um, I really appreciate what you did, and let's see what we can do to get more kids wearing helmets. Uh, there's a lot of sources for cheap helmets that are actually effective. Thank you.
Thanks, Eric.
I just want to say this is a really great program, uh, just for these you, young adults to just simply speak up and get that nervousness out. And I hear a lot of ums and uh, but either ways, they're able to get out. I just really, I'm, I'm jealous, to be honest, and I really wish that um, there can be some kind of a, a way that as an adult, that we can get a little bit of a knowledge on how the process goes too, because I think many times, I'm sitting in YouTube pulling my, you know, my hair, just seeing, you know, the public comments and everything, and just saying like, I really wish they knew the, the due process and, and, and just have a little bit of, of what they've actually just experienced and learned and, and such. That way, um, you know, I think people could come in a little bit more prepared uh, for public comments and everything, but uh, salute to you guys and yeah, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Good evening, uh, Mayor and City Council. Um, I just want to thank the city staff for an incredible opportunity that they gave these uh, young people in this internship. Um, I'm a parent of one of those children, and I will tell you that the amazing, which what this person learned uh, was phenomenal, and I think it had to do with the professionalism and the faith that the staff had in those students. So I want to commend that, the staff for what they did, because it was a very fruitful and learning, a wonderful learning experience for them. So thank you very much for, for this opportunity, for them.
I too would like to take, uh, thank the city for this program, and of course, Sophie Rome, I just think everything she touches turns to gold. I've always thought that, she's just a phenomenal employee to have, and I've always respected her. I think she, every project that she has, honestly, turns to gold, and I really appreciate her working for the city. Thank you too.
Thanks, Selena.
I just wanted to say that this is exactly where our Salinas city tax dollars should be going to, programs like this, that prepare our youth to be um, engaged in the city that they live in. And I want to say that recently I went to the Emergency Nurses Association Conference in Sacramento, and one of the things that we talked about was bicycle and helmet safety. As a trauma nurse, I have seen firsthand what happens when high speed and no helmet meet the cement, and it's not very nice, it can be, you know, life-changing for somebody. So it's really nice to see that um, the youth is engaged in that. So kudos actually to all of you, because every project that you guys worked on was important, and I'm glad that the Salinas tax dollars are going to something um, beneficial like this.
How you doing? Uh, Ricardo Garcia, uh, live here in the city Salinas, uh, Creek, Creek Bridge. Um, my daughter also is one of them, she's the one that told me about Measure G. Um, really grateful uh, to the City of Salinas, thank you guys. Um, she, you know, I mean, uh, they look great, by the way, professional, um, and I just want this, this to expand, that's, that's what I'm looking for, hopefully in the future. Um, hopefully more boys, um, you know, it seems like the women are taking over. Um, hey, but great job, um, ladies, uh, gentlemen, good job, and I want to thank you um, for uh, for this, this, the time you spent um, teaching uh, these, these young adults. Um, and I want to thank you guys once again, and you guys are doing a great job, um, and God bless, thank you.
Thank you. All right. All right. Anybody on Zoom on this item? Uh, hey, I don't see any hands up, thank you. All right, back to council for any final comments? We'll start with Councilmember Sandoval.
Sure, well, you all did amazing. Uh, I really liked that Sophie empowered all of you to, to, you know, be free and to be able to bring your ideas. When I, when I talk to her about the program, she always wants to not just create a program where she's teaching you something, but where she's expanding on your skills and teaching you new things, but also listening to your voice. Also can see some of you have future council members, maybe a future mayor, so um, I'm excited at the experience that you all got. Um, I like the idea for the logo on Measure G, I think there's so many things, helmet, bicycle safety, all those things are so important. Um, I, I heard a little bit of comments about the processes and some of the obstacles, and when you're on city council, you help develop some of those policies and can help push those obstacles sometimes out of the way, so that it's more efficient for our residents. So another pitch to run for office. Um, but before we leave, I'd love to be able to get a picture with all of you, uh, because I think you all did amazing work. And Sophie, I appreciate you very much, because you're really helping empower our youth, so thank you.
Tony?
I also want to thank you, and for the father that's here, you have an amazing dad, for him to be here and just be excited and supportive. You know, welcome to the world of politics, life is not easy. So anytime you want to make change, whether it's just a helmet, it requires a lot of policy, it requires a lot of people talking, speaking their mind, but it's great that you got a taste of that. But you know, the ultimate task is to be able to respect people's opinions, because up here, and as you already know by the task that you had in front of you, we are here to serve people. That's what we do. And at the end of the day, we have to make a decision. And some people not like your brilliant decision and some others will, but hopefully you'll make something good of your community. And Ms. Rome, today you got a compliment from Ms. Yolanda Hayes, that is gold, take it to the bank. Because a compliment like that is valuable. And Ms. Sophie, I, I would concur, you're, you're doing a great job here, you really are, you're always upbeat, even though when the day's not that sunny, but you bring, you're, you're a great asset to this community. You are putting Salinas on the map, every time I look at something, you're bringing up something positive. And I think today you, you highlighted these young people, and we wish them well, because it's just the start of life, so welcome. Thank you very much.
Jose?
Thank you, Mayor. So if whoever's in charge of Sophie's performance review, I hope you get some of the clips tonight, right? Hopefully we get that done soon, right?
Yes.
Um, I think we heard our interns loud and clear, we need louder, uh, longer lunches, not louder lunches. Uh, just wanted to thank you guys in particular for all the hard work that you guys put into it. I know this is probably not something that every high schooler or high school graduate wants to do immediately after high school, right? Instead of going off, doing whatever high schoolers nowadays do, you know, freshly after graduation, you guys opted to stay here locally, put in some work and get back to your community. So first and foremost, I thank you guys for that sacrifice and that commitment to your community. Just want to point out that like my colleagues mentioned, a lot of the work that you guys uh, did and learned about was the process and how, how much bureaucracy there is behind doing some of these things and implementing policies. But just want you guys to remember, it doesn't have to be that way, right? Just because things are difficult, doesn't mean that they should be that difficult to get done, right? So with the helmet policy, you know, maybe yes, it was difficult, but identify those barriers and what can we do as a council to help remove those, right? Whether it's Measure G, whether it's, you know, Williams Road Expansion Project and things of that nature, let us know, right? And stay involved. Uh, we also have an upcoming youth council, right? That's currently uh, in their first year in cohort. So really excited to see how we continue to engage our youth, and also really wanted to, to highlight you guys, and also make note that, you know, youth and seniors are part of our strategic plan for this year, so we want to continue to see those investments and continue to see what work, great work you guys do. So I hope, for those of you that are immediately going off to college, that you guys come back and choose to make Salinas your permanent home, uh, by choice, right? And you continue to deliver that same uh, zealous uh, community engagement as you perceive as, as citizens here in Salinas. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Jose. Berilio?
Yeah, I want to thank all of you for uh, sharing um, your experience. Uh, I was most um, uh, drawn towards the, the data side of what you presented, and as city council members, a lot of times, our decisions need to be data-driven, and for you, you know, specifically, I'm thinking about the, the bicycle helmets, you know, you hit so many areas, you know, public, public safety, uh, transportation, it really got my, my head going again, and just looking at, you know, what people, you know, looking at. Um, in terms of those who are and those who are not, um, um, wearing their helmets, uh, really draws, y- you know, my, my attention. And to see uh, a group of young folks like you gives me a lot of hope, in the sense that I hope all of you plan on staying, I mean, going off to college, then coming back to Salinas and taking your respective uh, roles. As mentioned by some of my other council members, um, quite often, uh, we see that individuals like you that get involved in programs like this typically go off and get involved in government or in uh, specific uh, sector industries and taking leadership roles there. And so tonight, you know, just seeing uh, all the hard work that got put into this, and the, the leadership, uh, gives me a lot of hope and will help me sleep better at night. Uh, I know that you've all probably made your parents and guardians, families and friends are very, very proud, and we're very proud of all your work as well. Um, you guys are real, real changers um, in this community, and I'm going to go back and look at, at the, the presentation again, because there's some recommendations I think we need to bring back to council. So thanks, you guys, great work.
Okay, thank you. Margaret?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, congratulations, I think you guys have pretty much said everything, I'm at the end down here like kind of lonely at the end. Um, but the youth voice is so important, and most often it's not heard, and that's a big problem with our community, is that we don't engage you early in the process and, and get your insights. Bureaucracy is real in government, it really happens, it's, it's tough. Things move a lot slower than they do in the private sector. So um, thank you for bringing that out and recognizing that and working through that, and knowing that you have all these exciting ideas, but you just can't go out and implement them right away. That's, that's the, the truth. Um, I love that you also came up with solutions, you didn't just say, well, I found this out, I found that out, but you said, here's some recommendations that I have, and we definitely need to take those into account, because there were some really important um, conversations that need to happen, based on your research and your data. I think that's so valuable for us to take into consideration. Um, you're the future leader, so like everyone said, please come back, we would love to have you as part of our community. And I wish you all the best of luck, and um, come back and see us again soon. Thank you so much.
Um, I, I think everything is, is, is been said. I, one of the comments that, that I liked was, you know, you had the latitude to do more than you, you thought, and so it sounds like one of the elements of the, the program was to really engage with the city, interact with the folks you were working with, and really kind of get, get a good feel of how government uh, works. You appeared to have liked it, and in being involved in the process, and, and, and I think that's a good thing. I think, you know, at the end of the day, we sit up here and Councilmember Brera talks some, you know, the, the ideas to serve. Despite appearances to the contrary sometimes, we actually like serving. And, and one of the things I've, I've found over the years are, cities are marvelously seductive institutions and entities with all the things that go into it and, and the people uh, that comprise a, a city. I mean, to me, I've always kind of found it fascinating. Um, and so it sounds like you had a good experience uh, encountering that reality, which I think at the end of the day, is the reason we're, we're sitting up here. And uh, so uh, and, and I think most of us actually recommend it, and it, and it sounds like uh, we've, you know, um, we, we certainly hope and are certainly very encouraged by the caliber of uh, young people that are in front of us, and, and Sophie, I think, I think you really did a, did, did a terrific job, so kudos to you and uh, and thanks for all your efforts, and uh, you know, as, I, I batted 50%. My daughter did report home for duty like my wife told her to, to live her life in Salinas. My son, we didn't quite do, but you know, I think the, the last thing I'll say is what really I think drives us here is, is we want to help create a community where you have the opportunity to, to come home and work and live and raise a family in the, in the community you grew up in. And so being attracted to Salinas, I think uh, helps promote that, so, well done. And I think you wanted a, you wanted a picture before they all took off?
Do you want to run a pause as well?
Yeah.
Yes.
Now, this, this is the only picture we're going to do on presentations tonight, we won't do a public hearing picture, so. But you are special and it is worth preserving. Come on, Sarah, do the same.
I don't think so.
Can I play it here in the corner?
The picture, Nazi.
Look at that, it's great.
Hold on. Ready?
Amazing. Love it, thank you.
And so, the new council member, thank you.
I know.
We'll trade you right now.
So it's my pleasure to be able to introduce to you Ayesha Lynn, who's present here, and Riley Ju, who's going to be online to share with you their proposal.
Thank you, Lisa, for the introduction. Hi, council, good evening. Just a little, I think this is a clicker, yeah, okay. So today we'll be talking to you about our economic development program that we created this summer. Just a little bit about me, my name is Ayesha Lynn. I go to the University of San Diego. I'm a double major in political science and international business, as well as double minoring in Spanish and business administration. And then I can go ahead and let Riley, my fellow intern, introduce herself.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for having us. An apology that I could not be there in person tonight. My name is Riley Ju. I am going into my third year at Cal State Monterey Bay, where I am double majoring in social and behavioral sciences with a concentration in political economy and collaborative health and human services with a concentration in public administration and nonprofit management.
So our program is titled From Streetfront to Storefront, and it's a pop-up business program to support small local businesses. Riley and I conducted a lot of research on similar programs in surrounding cities with similar demographics, and we tailored it to the needs of the city of Salinas.
So the purpose of our program From Streetfront to Storefront is, like Ayesha said, really to help support local small businesses. Going into this internship, both of us had similar, if not the same, goals going into it. We wanted to create a program that supports local small businesses and also tapped into the entrepreneurial potential of Salinas.
All right, so a little bit about the program From Streetfront to Storefront. Temporarily, we'll place a small business in vacant storefronts in downtown Salinas. We're not opposed to expanding this program to different areas of Salinas, but given that it's a pilot program, we found it best to start in downtown, given that we just have a new beautiful sign that was put in, we thought we can really capitalize on that. And then our outcomes are similar to our goals. They align with the two-year economic development plan created by the Assistant City Manager, Lisa, and we hope that this program can align, can help the economic development plan and its long-term goals. So some of those would be utilizing vacant spaces in downtown Salinas, boosting the local economy, furthering the downtown vibrancy efforts that are already in motion, as well as to contributing the achievement of the city's economic development goals.
So as you all can see here, here's a quote by Ayesha. She said this in a meeting, and I believe she said it in her internship interviews, and many people, including me, think it is incredible, so I may just put it in the slideshow. As Ayesha says, success does not mean leaving Salinas, it means investing in it. And we really want this idea, this concept to be driven home through our, through this program.
All righty, enough about us. Here, we're going to get into logistics of the program. So our key collaborators would be the business owners, the property owners, the city of Salinas, as well as local business organizations who have, Riley and I have had meetings with, and then that, who we partner with specifically would be determined later on.
All right, for a quick how it works. We are proposing that the city explores vacant spaces and discusses program collaborations with property owners, and then enter a master lease at a below-market rate. More to come a little bit later on that. Second, for business selection, eligible businesses will apply for the program, are selected, and will enter a sublease with the city to be placed in a temporary storefront. And that is where we are going, we are hoping to collaborate with a local business organization, which, again, we have reached out to a few of them, and it will ultimately be up to the economic development team to finalize that later on. And then third, the pop-up will occur. The city will work with the business to ensure it abides by all regulations and has access to a streamlined permit process if necessary, along with support throughout the duration of the pop-up. Lastly, for our results, we hope that this program helps a local small business gain experience in a brick-and-mortar location, the property owner earns some revenue, and the vacant location is advertised to prospective tenants.
All righty, here we have a pilot program suggested timeline. So first things first, we'd be placing the business and finding a compatible small business and property owner to pair for the program. Then at the third month mark, we would check in on the success of the pop-up and see if it's successful enough to determine, to, to, we'll see if it's successful enough to see if it can extend to six months. And then those determining factors would be decided later on. And then at our six-month mark, we would check in on the success of the pop-up again, and then end financial support. So I mean, there, at the six-month mark, would be the end of the pop-up program essentially. If the program and, if the pop-up and the property owner do want to continue separately, then they can figure that out. But then after the six-month mark, the city would go ahead and review the success of the pilot program and see if it would want to continue with it or not.
So now more about the last, the master lease, like I mentioned before. The master lease holder will be the city. Again, this will be a master lease with the property owner at a reduced rate, guaranteeing income for the property owner while maintaining affordability for the city and business owner. The average rate per square foot in, for a property in downtown Salinas is roughly $1.75 or $1.75 to $2.25 per square foot per month. So therefore, our suggested base rent, again, at a reduced rate, is a dollar per square foot in addition to 10% of the monthly revenue earned by the pop-up business, which will be capped at a maximum of $2 per square foot.
All right, so a little bit more about the responsibilities of the parties here. So the city of Salinas would be the master lease holder. They would also offer the business support through the local business organization we partner with. They provide the subsidized rent to the property owner as well as a $1,000 new tenant grant. The pop-up owners would be, would contribute 10% of their sales, which would go back into the program itself. A security deposit, insurance, utilities and things like that. And then this would be funded by the Economic Development Division as well.
For our estimated budget, this is a very, very rough budget, or sorry, rough estimate. Rents would be about a dollar worth, estimating that Ayesha's would be about 400 per fee, so that's $400 per month. And for six months, for one business, that is $2,400. We are looking to provide a new business stipend to help support small business in getting started in that pop-up. And then other, and another $1,000 to account for any other fees that may come up, such as permitting process or whatever it may be, coming to a total of $4,400. And again, like Ayesha said, that would be funded through the city manager's Economic Development Division budget.
All righty, and the way that we would be measuring the success of the program would be through gross revenue, so all monetary earnings per month, operational efficiency and net profit margin, so revenue subtracted by expenses, including rent and payroll. And then over the social impact, so evaluating social perception of the program and the impact on surrounding businesses. That could be, that could look a different, a lot of different ways, whether it's a survey or if the economic development team goes out themselves and conducts some sort of field work. But again, that would be determined after the program concludes.
Lastly, our ideal, the ideal result of the program, again, a local small business gains experience, hopefully broadens their customer base and builds their professional network, the property owner earns income while advertising locations to prospective tenants, and of course, increasing downtown vibrancy and foot traffic.
And that's all we have for you today. Thank you so much for your time and your attention. And then we're open for questions as well.
Great, thank you. All right, I'll start to my right. Councilmember Sandoval, anything?
No questions, just comments.
Okay, great. No questions. Okay, Jose?
I do have questions.
Yes.
Okay. All right, where do I start? Okey-dokey. All right, so on, love the program. I'll preface it with that, right? So is this program, would, would this be limited to retail, as I understand it, right?
Yes, from here, yeah. We're starting off with retail programs. We're taking, we're basically being inspired from other programs that already exist. And for now, we want to start with retail, but that doesn't mean we can't expand. But so far, we've only seen programs that cater to retail and have been successful. So yes, retail for now.
Okay, awesome. And going off that trail of like limiting this to retail to start off with, in the proposal and in your presentation, there's a definition of, starting this off in the downtown area.
Yeah.
Do you guys have a definition of what downtown is for you all?
Yeah, so for downtown, we're talking about like the 103, like that street. I'm not, I actually don't really know the name, but I think Main Street. That is particularly because when, one day Riley and I went on a walk and we saw, again, the big sign, you've heard this story, and then we saw two empty buildings and next to that sign, and it was kind of sad. They were boarded up and they just didn't look great, and so that's where that idea started. So we're focusing on that strip for now, yes.
And have we, have you guys identified any property owners or property managers that would be open to this?
Yeah, so we had a conversation with Taylor Farms and Steve Ish, and they are very receptive to our program. And so right now, we're looking at the building, I'm not sure what street it on, but it's one of the Taylor buildings that they own.
Okay, awesome. And then also in the proposal itself, you guys mentioned, quote, innovative, out-of-the-box businesses that can bring foot traffic and vibrancy to downtown Salinas.
Yeah.
Can you elaborate a little bit further on what innovative, out-of-the-box businesses means and what kind of criteria would you establish to help weed those out?
Yeah, so we just sent out an interest form and we're kind of going off of that. But I think in the proposal, what we meant was something that is not necessarily what we already have downtown, like another clothing store, something that's going to bring attention and make downtown Salinas look different and stand out. So not just another women's clothing store, maybe something that involves like plants or pottery or things like that. We got in, we got an interest form from someone who makes candles, so that would be really cool, and they're all natural. So we're just trying to target things that not already downtown and not have kind of competition for the other surrounding retail stores. But that's what we mean for that.
Awesome. And then you guys mentioned starting off, proposed, starting off with a six-month lease with the option for an extension. Is there a reason, what was, what's the reasoning behind a six-month lease as opposed to a one-year lease to start off?
Yeah, so for six-month lease, I think it's just because it is a pilot program. We don't want to extend it too long and extend funding if it's not successful. So we thought that six months was prob, was a good amount of time to determine if that would be successful to continue on. And then if the pilot program is successful with the six months, then we can reevaluate later on and the economic development team can decide if they want to extend the program to six months to a year. But for now, given that it's a pilot and we just want to try it out, six months was the period, time period that we decided on.
Okay, awesome. And then on the, on slide number 11, when you discuss roles with, with what the city of Salinas is this and what the pop-up owners are going to be doing, there's a description of the utilities, right? So would utilities in the case that the property in question is more of like a, like a swap-me type of situation, right? Say the city enters into a master lease agreement with that type of property, would the utilities be split up like similar to how in residential housing, it's rubs? So it's divided just based on like equally amongst all tenants?
Yeah, so the details of that question, I think we haven't really worked out just yet. But logistically, I think it would be split among, split amongst the tenants that are in the property. And so if there's two storefronts in the, if there's two businesses in that storefront, then I'm assuming that they would split the utilities to make it fair.
Okay. And then with the $1,000 new tenant grant, are you guys proposing that be offered upfront? Say the city provides them with a check, or are you proposing it be offered on a reimbursement basis?
We're proposing it as an upfront check, kind of like a grant, a stipend type of thing, yeah.
So that concludes my questions, Mary, thank you. Berilio, any questions?
Okay, my questions are probably going to be related, related to my comments. Have you heard of the Opportunity Fund for your staff?
No, I have not.
And then they offer a, or they have a microloan program? Okay, so that was my question.
Okay.
And then I'll follow up shortly with, with comments. The other question I wanted to know, do we have an idea more or less what we might get from these pop-ups? Are we looking at individuals who may do like shirts or hats or what are the kind of product that they might have? Could it be something along the lines of treats that doesn't require a site, that has like a, like a kitchen? Do we have a general idea of what those may look like?
I'm sorry, I didn't fully understand your question. Can you help me?
Then the pop-up.
Yeah. Can you help me like rephrase the question?
Do we have an idea of, well, here, let me frame it this way then. Other pop-up programs that you've seen?
Oh, okay.
What kind of pop-ups have, have we seen? Is it like embroidery or?
Yeah, there's multiple kind of all over California. The biggest one that we spoke with was San Jose Made. They have a pop-up called Moment. They started up in 2020 and they've only done retail businesses. I think a lot of them was similar to what the inquiries that we've gotten so far, candles, plants. I know there's been some clothing companies, but it just, it depends on what the city needs, as well as Santa Cruz. I know they had a children's store that was really successful and ended up after the prop, after their pop-up program, they were able to stay in that same location and continue running their business. And it was like a children's store.
Okay, okay, helps clarify things, thank you.
Yeah.
Margaret?
Thank you, Mayor. I love the, I love the idea. I think it's very innovative and very fun. I was wondering if you have done a count on like the number of unoccupied buildings right now in the 103 on a block?
Yeah. We haven't, we don't have an exact count, I believe. I know Riley maybe, maybe, may be able to answer this question better than I did. I know she has a few pictures of the empty buildings that we did see. I'm not sure if she has an exact count though, Riley.
I do not have an exact number, but just, just walking up and down Main Street and taking pictures of some of the vacant spaces, I would say at least five. But of course, there was probably some that we didn't see. And also taking into account that some of those spaces may already be leased out, but there is not a business yet in that storefront. So, but there does appear to be a need for, for businesses in those vacant spaces in downtown. And there is also, there does appear to be a need for more retail businesses in the downtown area as well. So, thank you.
Thank you.
If that answers your question.
I, I just know like a lot of the restaurants down in downtown are really struggling right now because people aren't eating out as much, it's so expensive, but, so I'm wondering if like what the life expectancy of a new restaurant is, you know, without a, a big advertising budget? And if that's something you guys are including is some advertising to help them get off the ground and?
Yeah, so, well, to clarify, we wouldn't be focusing on like the food or beverage industry.
Okay, just retail strictly.
Yeah, just retail for now. That doesn't mean we're opposed to it, but just to kind of, for the pilot programs, just so it can be as successful as possible, we want to start with retail. But then we, yeah, we would include marketing, depending on the local, what local business organization we partner with, we would hope to provide that business support, including any type of marketing skills that we can kind of give their way.
Awesome, thank you.
Yeah.
All right, let's see if anybody in the public, any comments on questions? All right, anybody on Zoom? Okay, let's come back for final, final comments. Andrew?
Well, thank you, ladies, did an amazing job. I mean, so in-depth. I'm looking forward to the next steps. I think this is going to be a big opportunity for small businesses because it's really hard to get off the ground. So I think it's very well thought out and I'm looking forward to it. So great job, ladies, on Zoom.
Thanks, thanks, Andrew. Okay, Tony?
Well, there's no doubt you both have been successful already. No easy task, but you got some good leadership, good mentors. I think the great thing here is the opportunity that you're presenting for someone. And I think what I like, the relationships that you're already building just putting this thing together, which is not no easy task. But let's see how it goes because, you know, a lot of times you start a business, whatever it is, you got to have ganas and a plan. And I think you're putting this plan together. And you have some good partners. You're looking for some property owners, people that are
That doesn't mean we're opposed to it, but just to kind of, for the pilot programs, just so it can be as successful as possible, we want to start with retail. But then, yeah, we would include marketing, depending on the local, what local business organization we partner with, we would hope to provide that business support, including any type of marketing skills that we can kind of give their way.
Awesome, thank you.
Yeah.
All right, let's see if anybody in the public, any comments on questions? All right, anybody on Zoom? Okay, let's come back for final, final comments. Andrew?
Well, thank you, ladies, did an amazing job, I mean, so in-depth. I'm looking forward to the next steps. I think this is going to be a big opportunity for small businesses because it's really hard to get off the ground. So, I think it's very well thought out, and I'm looking forward to it. So, great job, ladies, on Zoom.
Thanks, thanks, Andrew. Okay, Tony?
Well, there's no doubt, you both have been successful already. No easy task, but you got some good leadership, good mentors. I think the great thing here is the opportunity that you're presenting for someone. And I think what I like, the relationships that you're already building just putting this thing together, which is not no easy task. But let's see how it goes, because, you know, a lot of times, you start a business, whatever it is, you got to have ganas and a plan, and I think you're putting this plan together. And you have some good partners, you're looking for some property owners, people that are willing to put some investment together. Let's just keep our fingers crossed, and good luck. Thanks to both of you.
Thank you, Tony. Jose?
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to thank both of y'all, first and foremost, for all the work that you put into it. I was one of the stakeholders that got to be interviewed as part of my main job as program manager for the Small Business Development Center. And I had way more questions during our one-on-one, so thank you guys for taking the time to answer them. Really excited to see this pilot program kind of move forward here in Salinas. Again, in my role as in the Small Business Development Center, had the opportunity firsthand to work with the folks over at the City of Santa Cruz, seeing how that program's been implemented, seeing the successes. And like I mentioned to you previously, I'm just really excited to see those same successes be emulated here and see what other interesting new businesses we're able to get here locally as well. And also, want to give a little shout-out to yourself, Alyssa. Don't under, underplay yourself in the quote, "Success does not mean leaving Salinas, it means investing in it." She actually said that to me during our meeting, and Lisa Murphy was like, "Write that down," right? So, I hope you include that in all your applications as you move forward. You know, Salinas does not, success does not mean leaving Salinas, it means investing in it. And I think that's the kind of energy that you guys brought into this proposal. And just overall, thank you guys, and thank you, Lisa, for working with them and guiding them.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jose.
Yes, just wanted to share with staff and the two of you. You might want to take a look into the Opportunity Fund. And, you know, you can jump on Google and, and search Opportunity Fund. And what you'll typically find is, they're micro-lending programs. So, for example, the website I'm thinking of, it's dogoodla.org, right? Obviously, LA, which probably means Southern, Southern California. So, they do have a micro-finance, it's a micro-loan program, and it's 9,600, that's been their, their average, right? The, and this is part of their micro-lending program. I know that in the past, other funders that have launched opportunity funds, typically, right? It's a, it's a grant or loan, well, it starts off as a loan, that they hope that they will get, you know, in return. Sometimes, what they will do is they will make it a forgivable loan, which essentially makes it a grant. So, if we have this program where we are looking for individuals who want to start like, a small pop-up, there are funding opportunities out there for them. And again, typically, they're under, you know, $10,000. What you find with some banks is quite often, they're a little bit, like, they're always reluctant because there's a risk on their end when they're loaning money to somebody starting a business. But these micro-loans will help like, these small individuals get started. And it really helps them ask the question if they want to take their idea to the next, to the next level. You may also want to try Opportunity Fund Northern California. That's probably, you know, would be most beneficial to those here in our area. And they're also in San Jose, and they also provide seed money. I think they would be very excited to hear about what we're doing here and look at some of the individuals that we're serving and see if they can help finance and support maybe the next level after, after they go through this program. But thank you for all your work, and enjoy UC San Diego. I went to San Diego State, so it's very hard to leave Northern California.
It is, yeah.
So, I'm going to push you to, to come back to Salinas, and if we can squeeze in a job for her, that would be great, too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Margaret?
Thank you, Mayor. That was going to be my comment, when, when you go to San Diego, hopefully you won't forget about us because we want to see this project go through. No, it's super exciting, there's, I know there's a couple of buildings that are, a couple of my favorites in downtown, and they've been vacant for a really, really long time, and probably the people don't live here, and maybe they don't need the income. But I would really love to see some of those buildings activated because they're very special, and I think it would bring a lot of vibrancy to our downtown. So, thanks for all your ideas, and let's make it happen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just, just a couple of things real quickly, and it started with the Finance Committee meeting this afternoon. You know, when you begin to get capacity to pursue economic opportunities, money follows ideas, and you have to have a capacity to, to execute. And, and so, that, that's number one, and that, that's a good thing that's going to begin to happen in, in Salinas. The second thing we saw on display tonight is we have a lot of talented, creative, young people in this community. And, you know, you know, the mantra, when you want to succeed economically, you have to have access to capital, access to markets, and access to talent. We have talent. The, the other thing that I think is important about this, and I, and I wouldn't, and I wouldn't be casual about it, I think this program is right on the money. And it may need to be tweaked or calibrated a little bit, and that's just part of the process. You know, as, as a city, we, we like property taxes and sales taxes. And we live in an interesting era in terms of what's, what's the future of, of retail. And, and I'll just finish my comments with this, and this is why this program has me intrigued. Besides being a good thing, and, you know, and I think it was raised earlier, this is a program that could easily work throughout the various business districts in, in Salinas. And, and, you know, we have a great small business community here, very entrepreneurial. So, we, we have all the elements. But what intrigues me about retail is I had a good friend who was in the commercial leasing business for the, you know, on the mall side. And they would have their annual convention every year, and they would see 100 new concepts. But in recent years, they'd be down to just three or four. So, you're kind of left asking the question, "Is that it, all done?" You know, in my lifetime, when I started my business career, there was no Walmart. But now, there is. So, what I think's exciting about this is, when you think about retail, all done? You think it's all done?
No, I don't.
Okay, so, to have Salinas kind of be leading edge, cutting edge, and really kind of put out an APB, you know, retail creativity, entrepreneurship, you know, we're, we're open, we're open for, we're open for business. So, I, so I think that's really, it's important for a city, it's important for quality of life, and, and I think you two are to be amended. The other thing I will say, since some folks have made some references to San Diego, I'm going to guess you know where Little Italy is in San, in San Diego. Pretty interesting, pretty interesting neighborhood spot with a lot of different businesses and that sort of thing. So, that's, those are the sorts of things that can happen, and kind of, and a snowball a little bit when you, when you kind of get all that creativity unleashed. Well done, and I think this is great and important, so, thank you.
Thank you.
And there's no action required other than make it work.
I think an applause is appropriate.
We're going to get me in trouble, I've been trying to keep the chamber quiet, quiet all night. All right, okay, we're, we're now going to do public hearing stuff. And so, we are going to receive a report from Courtney. You are in the audience, come on up, and we're going to talk about an extension on a tentative map with low density and over, airport overlays and all sorts of good things.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Today, we're going to talk about a time extension to a tentative map. This is the final and last time extension to tentative map. What is the number? It's a map from 2019. It's a request to subdivide a 7.75 acre lot into 37 residential lots. This project has a planned unit development permit attached to it. By, by relation, the applications included alternative development standards. This was approved by the council on August 13, 2021. As part of that project, there was a mitigated negative declaration and a set of what we call alternative street sections, street furniture design for interior private roadways. If council approves the time extension tonight, staff would approve a time extension to the related planned unit development permit. So, the two permits would be both tied to the same timeframe, which would be one year. This is the last year. In terms of background, the yellow area on the map references the, the site boundary. So, it's basically situated between East Laurel Drive and Madera Avenue. Surrounding uses include residential to the north, the south, and the east, and open space to the west. Access to the site is from 11 Hill Circle, which is that little cul-de-sac, where there's sort of a little circle there in the bottom of the yellow, and Madera Avenue. This image shows the actual tentative map drawing. It shows the topography, it's, it's very terrain-intensive in terms of verticality. There's a creek in the middle of it. This shows the private roads, the lots within the subdivision. For the subdivision map back and local ordinance, a maximum of five years is allowed for recordation of a tentative, or recordation of a final map. So, basically, once the tentative map is approved, there's a shot clock. The first initial shot clock is two years, and there were two, I think, one, two, three time extensions granted. So, the final date would be April 13, 2026. If the applicant cannot record by that date, then the applicant would be required to apply for a new PUD and a new tentative map and start the process again. So, we're getting near the, the final, the finality of getting through this process. Staff recommends the council approve the time extension and is available for questions.
Okay, thanks, Courtney. Okay, Margaret?
Question, I was wondering what the, have the delays been all about one particular issue or multiple?
I would defer some of that to the applicant, perhaps. I believe they're here attending on Zoom. I, I can't say exactly what is, and it could be a set of, of, of funding issues or, or market conditions, or complexity of the lot. This is not an easy property to develop. If you've seen it and looked at it, it's, it's basically in a, in a canyon. Most of the improvements that are there were a part of a different project, and this project kind of was morphed to fit at least one or two projects before. Long, long time ago, the council might remember, there was a senior housing development, which was not a housing subdivision. So, this, this site has been the subject of, of various permitting activities over the years.
It's complicated, yeah.
It's not flat and level and perfectly square.
Got you, okay, thank you.
Sure.
Maria? Questions?
Just very quickly, I, maybe just for the, for the public to hear. So, what, what was the nature of the, the negative, the mitigations? Or maybe at least the first three?
Sure, you're taking me back to 2019. The mitigated negative declaration had a number of mitigation measures. There is a creek running down the middle of it. The, the city regulations require certain setbacks from the creek. It's in a flood plain, I think a floodway. There are some, some critters, there's some studies, there's plant life, there's oak wood, oak, what we call woodland habitat. It, it's, mostly those mitigation measures are actually contained in the mitigated negative declaration, which was attached to the report with the findings. But in general, speaking in summary, it focused around habitats and the creek part. There's some fish and game requirements, Army Corps requirements, believe it or not, because that, that waterway feeds into Car Lake. It's, it shows up as a, I think that was termed Madera Ditch at one time, but it's more or less a blue stream of, of water, which is a defined federal, you know, waterway that, that eventually carries all the way into Monterey Bay.
Any, any endangered species or history of endangered species in the, in the area?
The species, I can't remember off the top of my head. I'd, I'd have to, to dig back into that.
That's fine, thank you.
Yeah. We're, we're not suggesting any changes to the environmental. All of the mitigation measures back from 2019 would still be applicable to this project. And, and staff recommends that the findings and the, the motion include reference to that previously adopted mitigated negative declaration.
Thank you.
Jose?
Thank you, Mayor. So, just to confirm, this would be the last time we would be approving an extension, should we approve it tonight, correct?
Correct, we're, we're at the end of the, end of the road, so to speak, on, on the five years of a map.
Okay. If, if the timeline runs out, would the applicant have to resubmit an application and go through the whole process again to, for this type, for this particular development?
Correct. This new date would be mid, mid-April of 2026. We have winter just around the corner. This is going to be a, a challenge for the, for the developer, in my opinion. But, yes, the clock is ticking, and they would have to reapply.
What kind of work would the developer have to do in order for the permit not to expire? Say, if we extend this for a year, and all they did was break ground, would the permit be revoked, or would they, and they, we need to reapply? Or would that be sufficient to consider, you know, the, the permit in use?
Right, there's two things happening. There is the, the tentative map. So, recording of the final map would vest the map part. But because there's a PUD connected with this project, the PUD requires issuance of a building permit and construction substantially underway or diligently pursued, or something like that, it says in the permitting. We're actually having a meeting tomorrow with staff and the applicant to go over what that means. There's a question whether that is the, the horizontal improvements, which would be, you know, digging up the, the dirt to put in the streets and the pipes, or if it entails something like concrete slabs and two-by-fours and vertical construction.
So, it sounds like it's to be, to be determined, just kind of?
We're working on that right now, we're going to have a meeting on that tomorrow, correct?
That's all my questions.
Okay, great, thank you. Tony?
Good to see you, Mr. Grossman. You know, there's a project a long time coming. You know, your second slide, could you show it real quick, please? And, and I asked the city attorney, he, he did answer some of the questions, but I want the public to know about the overlays, if you can. Because this is a very problematic lot, and I, I hope the developer just continues to be excited about. You know where it talks about airport overlay? Yeah, there. Can, can you just quickly, and again, Mr. Callahan explained to me, but I think this is good information. Can you, can you just briefly tell us what this really means? The residential low-density airport overlay flood overlay zoning district?
Sure. The base district is RL, I think it's 5.5, which is essentially low-density detached, single-family housing. Of course, there's, there's the state regulations now that, that have different activities that are allowed in that particular district, such as ADUs and whatnot. However, the rest of the, the designations are overlays. The flood overlay, there is a creek, there are some high-water and, and top-of-bank designations and delineations that are, that are contained in the drawings because there's water that flows through this property and habitat, like I mentioned before. Airport overlay, that's more or less a disclosure so that when the deeds are put together for the property, there is disclosure that the site is impacted by airport operations. There may be noise of overflying aircraft.
Yeah, and Mr. Grossman, if this council does approve this extension, and looking at your map, is there going to be a one-way in, one-way out in that neighborhood?
No, there's two access points. The circle that is shown right here, if everyone can see that, and I'll switch it over here, that little circle, that is the cul-de-sac existing of Hill Circle. So, that is one access point. And the property circulates through, kind of a loop through here, and then it continues on and comes out at Madera. And I'll do the same thing over here, so you can circulate and come out at Madera. So, there's, there's two access points.
Yeah.
Private roadways.
And Mr. Grossman, I know that, because this has been a five-year project, And Mr. Grossman, I know that, because this has been a five-year project, some homeowners, property owners know about this project, but did we let them know that this meeting is coming forward?
Correct. The the time extension has been noticed 300 feet from the boundaries of the of the yellow, which is the outer boundaries of the project site.
No emails, no?
From what I understand from the planner, there was no interaction or or corresponding with residents nearby.
Yeah. Mr. Grossman, did you say the developer is on Zoom?
I'm sorry?
Did you say the developer is listening on Zoom?
My understanding, he is to be on Zoom.
Mr. Mayor, when it's appropriate, when it's time, I'd like to hear from the developer.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
You bet.
Mr. Grossman?
Andrew? So I know we're gonna hear from the developer, but so when do we know, do we have an inclination from the developer when this will be like shovel-ready, or do we have a timeline on that, if we grant this extension?
Yeah, we'll probably end up with more information following tomorrow's meeting with with the developer, but my understanding and and observing the the flow of emails over the last couple of months, they're getting closer and closer, and they understand there is a deadline coming up. My understanding is that the team is is getting together. They're they're circling the wagons, they're huddling up to to get this thing done. That's my understanding.
So are you are you working with him, or are you accessible to him, or is it a a team, or how does, who's who's the point person for this project?
In the past, the applicant has been John Filigera. Recently, there have been more more players with the development team that we've been interacting with. So I I think the the team is coming together. I'd like to defer that, though, more in detail, to the to the development team.
I remember, like, from your staff, though, is it you, or?
Yes, they're interacting with with staff, correct.
Those are all my questions, thank you.
Okay. All right, let's see, why don't we go out to the public and see if there are any any competent, or, okay, or before we do that, if the applicant is on Zoom, we'll make him part of the presentation rather than the comment. Is the applicant there? Okay. John, I see you there, if you would like to comment before we go out for public comment.
Hello?
Yep, we got you. Courtney, do you want to kind of?
Go ahead, Mr. Filigera.
John, I presume you've been following the conversation. Would is there, would you like to talk about the project from your perspective and where things stand?
Sure, as long as you can hear me, that's what I'm trying to do is.
No, we can.
I'm trying to wave my hand. Can you hear me?
Yes. We can hear you.
All right, good. So Courtney had explained to everybody there at the city council, first of all, hello, council, I'm Mr. Mayor. This has been an ongoing project for myself, and it's been one where I've done a lot of development in in real estate with one or two units, but nothing that entails 37 units. So it was a huge learning experience for me. And what's taken place with a lot of the extensions is the first time I didn't realize that we needed a performance bond prior to the recordation of the map. And I found out that for me, trying to get that surety bond was gonna be very expensive, and I was having a problem qualifying for it. What I've done is I've opened up my LLC to a development team up in Northern California, and that's the team that has been talking to Courtney and his team, Public Works, Tom Willis, a number of people. And the reason why we're going with the extension, I forgot to tell you this, but you had mentioned that there was a couple of things that you're asking, why was the extension granted and why did I need it? What I didn't realize, or again, I was told by my civil engineer that Fish and Game had given me a stream bed alteration agreement, and that everything was fine with that. And the planning commission was not fine with that. They wanted a letter from Fish and Game stating that it was okay to go ahead and alter the stream bed, and ultimately, they had already said that, but it took me nine months to get Fish and Game to go ahead and say, yes, it's okay that you can play in a stream bed, and as long as you don't alter it. And I've got all the requirements from them, which we intend to, you know, have to do to take care of their mitigation of of the creek. The creek has been involved with a bunch of homeless people. They're they're incredible, they burrow into the ground, burrow into the sides of the hills, and I've kicked them all out. I've I've spent countless thousands of dollars to go ahead and clean up the project when I get violations from the city saying that I've got garbage sitting out there. And it was, again, I, you know, I'm speaking freely now, but when the city kicked out the people from up the street at, was it that VA Park and Stream, and they got in there and cleaned it all up, and they kept the homeless out, well, the homeless came down and camped out in my place. And I had over 100 people, I I had all kinds of homes and all kinds of garbage to clean up. But that that's the reason for a lot of the delays, but this crew that I have right now, they're all ready to go. He's building a lot of homes up in the Chico area that were affected by the fires up there, and he's looked at it. We've got the loan put together, and all we're trying to do is get the recorded final map done and 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 get working on the project. He believes that he can get it done, he's got all the equipment to do it, and as long as we're, I'd say actively involved, or it looks like we're producing the subdivision what the city is required or wanting, then if we weren't done, say, in that time period, that they would go ahead and grant just a couple of month extension to go and finish up whatever is needed on the subdivision. My interpretation of what's needed is the final map needs to be recorded, and we need to start breaking ground. And that's what I thought I was approved for, and that's what I thought that permit was for. But I guess Courtney explained that there's a second PUD permit that goes along with that, and that has some other criteria that we have to follow. But I don't know if my team, I think my team is listening to this, I I hope they are, because he was on the the computer at four o'clock, and he hasn't experienced a city council meeting before, and so I I hope he's still here. His name is Jared, and the builder is C D, CDC builders, and and I can get all of that information over to Courtney, and we can, you know, get this thing approved and recorded and bring 37 homes into Salinas, entry-level homes that Salinas needs right now.
Okay, all right.
Thank you for listening.
Okay, thank you, John. Okay, all right. Yeah, let's go to the public, and then and then John, John dropped off. All right, public, you're on.
Name is Eric Peterson. It sounds like this guy's jumped through a phenomenal amount of hopes, and he should probably just be allowed to continue as long as he's doing everything the way we want. Sounds like he's earned another year. Thank you.
Thanks, Eric. All right, anyone else from the public?
Hi, Mary Ann Worden. I live out there. So I want to know exactly where this is going to be built. Is it built on the side where the Car Lake is at, or is it going to be built behind the Methodist church, that that area that that was supposed to be developed years ago and never got developed? There was, I think, some apartments that were going to be built there. So I want to know exactly where it's at. I mean, he talked about the homeless. Well, I know where the homeless are out there, but I'd like to know exactly whereabouts, and he mentioned the veterans, what part of it is above on this side, next to the apartments on the right-hand side there, the apartment building? Or on the other path, St. Edward's, there's those, there's that creek in through there that's had problems, and that used to be the Machado Ranch that was in there. So I am very familiar with all of that. So I just want to know exactly where these homes are going, I mean, not against it, but it sounds like the right hand doesn't know what the left hand's doing to give the very information to everybody. So thank you again, but I'm not against it, so, you know, I just want to know exactly where it's at, so when people ask me, I can give them the right correct answer. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Mary. Anyone else from the public? All right, we will, Courtney, before we finish up with, because we we spent a little time going through the maps our maps ourselves, so just for the council's sake, before we provide my final final comments and and recommend a course of action, where exactly is it?
Sure, could we go back to the the yellowed? I think it's slide three on the PowerPoint, it might be helpful. You're talking about the location of the property?
Yeah, just the location, yeah, because it's it's behind, it's essentially the area kind of behind the Methodist church, isn't it?
Yeah, can we zoom into that, or is that pretty much what we get here? So the roadway that is seen here is Laurel. This is Hill Circle. This is Madera. So it's the upper tributary to Car Lake. This is a Costa Plaza. So it's right across Laurel from a Costa Plaza condos.
Okay, yeah, so if you're coming up Laurel, then you come to San Born de la Raya.
Right. It's 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 kind of down in a hole.
You're right, it's it's kind of a tricky area unless you're. Okay, so that's where it is, thank you. Okay, we will come back to council and look for any, do we have, is there a motion to motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
A second. All right. Why don't we just go ahead and call for the question?
We're gonna have some comments.
Or if, and you're welcome to throw in comments if you'd like, yes.
You know, I was pretty excited about listening of the pop-up programs, but but this project has been going on for five years, and I remember when the gentleman had, was required, because there's a lot of transients out there right now, as we speak, there's been fires, a lot of garbage. People were scared, but the police department at that time said, before we can get involved in trying to get people out of there, he needs to fence out that area. Well, he goes out and spends $50,000 on fencing. Then on top of that, you gotta put a no trespassing signs. Well, they stole all that. And, you know, sometimes these pop-up, these presentations are great, but when people really need our our help, sometimes for some reasons, we either tell them, well, it's private property, or we don't have the the staff. I think when individuals like that are wanting to improve our neighborhoods, we should be accessible to that. And even now, he's been calling, because there's a lot of transients, and not that because there's people not in need, but they create fires. You could, the amount of trash that's out there, and that's not his fault, but yet sometimes because, again, you see it's private property, so he's responsible, or we don't we have lack of staff. So who gets the bill? He gets the stuff. Those are concerning things for me.
No, I appreciate your comments, council member. Anyone else?
Just very quickly, thank you for the presentation, and my one note would be, I think this is my first time seeing an application come forward for a development that's not being proposed by a large corporate developer. So to the extent possible moving forward, if there's anything that we can do, you know, from lessons learned from, you know, engaging with this particular proposal and this particular applicant, as to how as a city we can do a better job of communicating, hey, if you're a first, if you're a local first-time developer, this is your first development, you know, these are all the things that you need to do, right? Like the gentleman mentioned, he had some issues with bonding that, you know, were associated with financing that pushed the timeline out, some issues with apartment of Fish and Game or Fish and Wildlife as well. So just letting applicants know ahead of time, not just what are, what is everything that you're gonna need from the city level, but here's the whole development process, here's a checklist, right? Just whatever we can do to help facilitate that moving forward, that way we don't have a situation like this where we're extending applications three, three times in a row because they continue to run into these roadblocks. That'd be just my my comments.
All right, thank you. Andrew, anything? All right, we'll go ahead and call for the question.
Councilmember Barajas?
Yes.
Councilmember Barrera?
Yes.
Councilmember Derigo?
Yes.
Councilmember Salazar?
Hi.
Councilmember Sandoval?
Yes.
Mayor Donahue?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, very good, thank you. All right, now we're gonna consider stuff, and so we're looking for Lisa Britton, and we're gonna talk about Suba's annual assessment.
Before we get started, I'm going to go ahead and recuse myself. I do want to mention I have received compensation in the last 12 months for work performed with Suba in support of the small business development. All right, stepping outside.
Great, okay, thank you for catching that, I appreciate it. Thank you, Chris. You see, you can take a slow walk to the podium. Okay, thank you, good.
Okay, good evening. The item before you is the consideration of the annual report from Suba for the year 2425, as well as setting a date, adopting a resolution of intention to hold a public hearing to consider the levy of assessment for fiscal year 2526. And Suba is the Salinas United Business Association, is the nonprofit organization appointed by the city council to provide benefit services to the members of the business improvement area by using the assessments collected. And per state law, Suba must present an annual report to the city council, which details their activities of the past year and their finances, as well as what they're proposing for the upcoming year with the levies that are anticipated. So with that, I will turn the presentation over to Alejandro Chavez, executive director of Suba. Thank you.
I was going to say good afternoon, but it's a little past afternoon, so, good evening, council members, mayor, city manager and city attorney. I want to thank you for this opportunity to go before you, as I do on an annual basis. Really briefly, I think that this year is is just like many of our others, where as an organization, we have had our ups and downs, but I think the same thing is happening currently for a lot of our businesses. We're we're seeing a drop in business for many of our businesses, and that's what we're hearing right now. So although we are presenting this annual report on what we were able to do for the year, one of the things that comes to mind when I do this presentation is what I'm hearing currently, not what we did last year, and so I'll I'll bring that up a little bit towards the end of the presentation. In our annual report, we wanted to share our accomplishments for the year for the Salinas United Business Association, and that was that we had a total of three ribbon cuttings that we did this year, although we were expecting to do many more. Sometimes the businesses weren't prepared to do them on time, and things fell apart, but we're going to do some one-year anniversaries this year instead of some of those ribbon cuttings that we weren't able to do last year. So that's something that's that's planned for this upcoming year. We've we did 19 workshops and webinars for the year. We promoted 117 businesses within our Suba area directly. We did 38 social media posts highlighting our Suba area. We did 16 radio and television interviews promoting the Suba area and our services. We held a total of 383 one-on-one meetings with businesses, and we did outreach to 1,720 businesses, and those were visits, so a lot of them were more than once that we did it. So they were businesses that we visited. So they were businesses that we visited two, three, four times during the year, and in some cases, eight, nine times a year, depending on some of the issues that came up for them. And a lot of that outreach that was done, in addition to those visits, had to do with some of the services that we provide, or talking to them about permitting, talking to them about events that were coming up, not just from Suba, but also in the community. One of those events being Ciclovia, El Grito. Some of those concerns sometimes come up when we're out there doing outreach. We wanted to talk a little bit about our partnership that we had this past year with MCBC. They helped us a lot with some of our workshops that we had. We did a lot of outreach together. But in saying that, our contract ends with them this year. Part of the funding that they had to have this contract was some funding that had come in from the federal government, and that funding is ending for them. And so, therefore, that contract with us is also ending. And so, some of the outreach that was being done during that time has, will be done in a different manner, not through a contract service, but rather as a partnership, as we've built that partnership. One of the things I think that's important to note, and some of the challenges that we've been having for years, is at one point, we were collecting about 70% of our assessments. This past year, we collected 40% of our assessments. So when we look at the collection rate of assessments, the total billed was $100,440, but we were able to collect $40,550. There was 315 businesses that we did not collect, nor did we send out to collections. So that's a huge hit for us this past year. And so, we've been working on how can we improve that without the contract. And so, one of the things that we've been doing is trying to figure out how we can, one, get more donations, two, do some events where we can raise some dollars. And so, that has been our challenge, and that's what we've been doing this upcoming year. We wanted to share with folks the goals and objectives for this upcoming year, for marketing and promotions, our business resources, our safety, our beautification and cleaning. We have made that, some of our goals, a little bit smaller than they have been in the past. Not a whole lot has changed, just a tiny bit has changed. So, as you can see, our goals are to provide 40 social media marketing posts, to do 18 social media marketing posts, to have 12 interviews on television and radio promoting the Suba area, to continue to do those ribbon cuttings, and three ribbon cuttings this upcoming year, although we know that it'll be more than that. To provide three classes of webinars for Suba members on business basics, to provide five workshops and webinars regarding business-related topics, and to provide 100 one-on-one meetings with Suba. We know that we will probably do better than that, but we wanted to kind of lower our expectations a little bit, just because we know our budget is something that we are going to have to work on this year, especially since we're losing the contract with MCBC. On the safety side, we will continue to do safety meetings with the police department and with our members, to bring in the police department to talk about safety within our area, to accordingly develop business area safety plans for those businesses that are interested in doing something like that. And then, to continue to monitor and contact city, county, state agencies regarding health, safety, and sanitary issues. On the beautification and cleaning side, we will continue to develop our ambassador cleanup and beautification program. It's been a challenge this past year. We've had small cleanups that we've done with our ambassadors, but we haven't been able to do large cleanups with our ambassadors, and partly because each business owner kind of has their own schedule. And so, we're still... We're a little challenged to try to figure out how to make that work for everybody. However, we are planning to do one large cleanup this upcoming year. So those are the upcoming goals and objectives for this upcoming year. Our budget for this past year, we had approved a total of $100,440 from the assessments, and for a total income that was approved of $213,967, we were able to collect $40,550. But we were able to bring in $155,762. Once we were able to account for all our operations, we had a fund balance this past year of $14,092. So we were able to try to stay within our means and still have a bit of a fund balance at the end. Our proposed budget for this upcoming year in '25-'26 is $100,440 would be if we were able to collect all the assessments. And then, we are looking at a budget of $132,032. So it's quite a shrink of close to $80,000, $80,000-plus dollars that we're looking from the budget from the previous year. However, we are looking at how we can cut some costs. So we're looking at our rent to see if there's a possibility that we make a change there and utilize a space that is shared with someone else, or that we get a space that is utilized by a business that they allow us to take over for, you know, during the time of this upcoming year. We're cutting some hours for myself, and then, we're just looking at different ways that we can do some cost savings. And so, that's part of the reason that we have shortened our goals and our objectives for the year, in part because we see what the budget is looking like for this upcoming And the requested action for tonight, as Lisa stated, is to adopt the resolution for approving fiscal year '24-'25, the report that's before you, and to adopt a resolution of intention to levy and collect an annual assessment of the Salinas United Business Association for the upcoming year of '25-'26. There was a date that we put on there, but we understand that, you know, it's up to the council to set the date. And normally, we don't always put a date on there, or sometimes we do, but we know that it's up to the city council to set that date. And that is our presentation. If you have any questions, glad to answer them.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Margaret?
I do have a question. Maybe it's just my eyes, but in '24-'25, you had a big number under, I think it's personnel costs, correct? $145,000?
Under what?
In personnel costs?
Yes.
And then, in '25-'26, you have nothing. I'm just trying to do the math there and figure out... Or am I just... Or is it... Okay, it's just...
Small print.
It says staff or something. Oh, there we go, okay. It says staff versus the other category.
Yeah.
So that's a significant reduction. You said you're just trying to share resources and keep the costs low?
Yeah, so part of what we're doing is that part of our staff was under the contract that we were getting from MCBC. So that staff is...
No longer.
No longer will be there, working for us. So that's one of the biggest costs that we have. And then, we're shortening the hours of myself. And then, part of the spread is also into the areas of marketing and beautification and safety. So some of those costs go into that.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Are you still have any questions?
How many Suba members are there?
Tomorrow, there's 500. The next day, there's a total of about 518 roughly. But it just depends on how many business licenses are out. So it changes every year a little bit on how many folks are within the Suba area. Unduplicated is probably closer to 400 and something. So sometimes, folks get two business licenses, so the count... And so, even though they may be in the count, for us, they don't really count because we only charge them once.
And in terms of... I'm thinking of... This is my first time hearing the Suba report. But I was wondering, in terms of next year, would it be possible to hear about, or if you could present to us, total number of, like, new businesses that open up in the Suba district? I would be interested in knowing, like, how many new businesses open up? And then, also, on the flip side of that, would want to know, like, how many of those closed? You know, I would want to know about that. I would probably extend that a little bit further in terms of, like, next year, like, why did they close? It just gives an understanding of what the business environment is like. And I see you have a comment.
Yeah, definitely. I think that one of the things is that we can definitely do that. On the opening side of it, I think we need to have a better mechanism with the city on business licenses that are being pulled for our area. But I think that we eventually find who those businesses are, and we can definitely share that in the report. In addition to those that are closing, not all of those are, we know of immediately, but we will find out from most of them. But I can... What I can tell you is that anecdotally, what's going on right now for a lot of the Suba businesses, which may be in other areas as well, is roughly about a 30% decrease in sales, for the most part, in our area. Folks have shared financials with us, so we've seen that it's about an average of about 30%. But most have been folks just telling us and sharing stories with us of what their numbers look like. So, I can tell you that there are three businesses currently right now in conversation with us, informing us that they will be closing this year before the end of December. So, we're sure of three that are closing, and there may be more, but those are the ones that have shared with us that they will be closing before the end of the year.
And there's a third part to that. And I'm just also be interested in knowing if there's, like, maybe like a transfer? And I don't know if that would constitute as a new business. So say you have a restaurant, like, I'd be interested in knowing, like, if somebody closes shop, but then, somebody comes in and they keep the same name, run the same type of operation, if it's like a restaurant?
It definitely happens. So, for example, I can give you an example. There's two businesses that this past year have gone through that. And one has been Delicias on East Alacel. That one closed for a short period of time, and it's reopened with new owners. Menu is pretty much the same. Food and cooks are pretty much the same. So, it wasn't necessarily a transfer, but it was, in the sense that it's still Delicias and it is still the same menu. So that has happened. And one of our jewelers also went from a Korean business-owned jewelry store to someone who purchased that from them. So it wasn't a direct transfer, but it was a transfer in the sense that it's the same business type.
And then, last question. In terms of those that are businesses, you mentioned 518. Kind of what's the definition? Because, you know, I think automatically, we think, you know, like storefront, you know, if I'm hearing 518, is that 518 kind of small businesses? Or does that also include, like, maybe an individual that's, like, living in the Suba district that, you know, they run, like, their own kind of small business out of home? Does the Suba members... Does it go all the way into someone that's running that kind of a small business?
It does, but there's very few folks that have a business license in the area around Suba that are within those other streets that aren't the big streets. So there are some businesses in the arterial areas. But for the most part, there's a couple of house cleaners. There's a couple of daycare centers.
Okay.
And then, there's a couple of others like that. But very few that are like that. But the majority are on the main streets, which are East Alacel, East Market, and North Sanborn. There are a few, though.
Thank you. And thank you for your presentation.
Tony?
Good to see you, Mr. Chavez. Can you go to the slide where you went from 70%? Is it 40%?
Sure.
Please. I appreciate your optimism. You don't have an easy job there. But, you know, as businesses are closing down and having difficulties within their businesses, you mentioned in your report, you're getting ready to lose your part-time employee.
Yeah.
Is that right? And then, you're going... You're gonna lower your... What does your schedule look like once you have less...
To make the budget work, we're talking probably down to about 25 hours a week.
And here, you got 600-plus businesses.
Yeah, yeah.
Mr. Chavez, as... Are we on life support here?
We are for this upcoming year until we can figure out something different that either changes. So part of the report mentioned looking at a BID model, but it takes a long time for that process to happen. So I think we may be on life support until we move into that model.
Maybe we should start the pop-up stores up in the Alacel. But let me ask you, sir. Because there's business partners, the Chamber of Commerce. I don't know what the relationship is there. But as businesses struggle hypothetically here, Mr. Chavez says tomorrow, "Hey, guess what, guys? I'm out of here." Is there somebody else that is ready to take your place?
As far as within Suba, or are you talking about another organization?
Within Suba.
You know, I think that we haven't been able to do that at this point, just because we don't have the funding to, say, if we want to use the term groom, or to, you know, mentor someone or prepare someone. I think that that is definitely not there at this point. I think that one of the things that, as far as partnerships are concerned, we've built great partnerships with those folks that are around us. So when you talk about the Chamber, we have done various events together. When you talk about Monterey County Business Council, we have done several events together and webinars, trainings together. When you talk about some of the other organizations that have come in as well, when you talk about Nogozzi, which is out of San Jose, the partnership that we've built with Get Virtual out of UC Santa Cruz, where we have built websites for free for many of our businesses, where there's been some social media training that has happened, as well as development of social media for some of our businesses. Those are doing really well, and they have learned how to connect with our community and our business community in particular. And so, those will continue if Suba is here or not.
Yeah. Well, that's great. So, and that was gonna be my next question was, because I know Suba has done great work. I mean, it's been, what, like, 20 years now? Maybe 20 years plus. Suba's going into a smaller office. The executive director's going shorter staff. You're presenting more things that we're gonna do, all kinds of different events. What's the relationship with the city? Do we have a hands-off, or what is it that we... I know you come here every year, but what do we do?
Well, you know, I think the best thing that we've been able to do with the city has been some of the grants that have happened in the past, some of the, you know, things that we've done together in the past. I could tell you that we have, as a business community within the Alacel area, we have been hoping for the facade improvement program to come out. And so, we are still waiting for that program to come out. So many of our businesses have been waiting for that to happen. I think that the partnership that has happened continues, and I think the one piece that the city has built that I am glad that they did was the small business program that they have, where they have folks that are navigators that assist small businesses through the process. I think that's the one piece that I could tell you that if Suba were to go away today, at least we know that there is that small business navigator that's there that didn't exist years ago. And we're talking now five, six years that this program has existed. And it's something that's very beneficial for a lot of small businesses, not just within Suba, but in the city of Salinas.
And again, I appreciate your optimism. I really do. My last question here. You think we're gonna see you here next year doing a report?
I expect myself to be here to do a report.
All right. Because you know what? The Alisal, as you already know it more than anyone, it's a very entrepreneur spirit out there. There's businesses inside of businesses.
Oh, yeah.
And when there's a struggle, it seems like there's always somebody there ready to pick up and open shop. So, I wish you well. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you, Tony.
Thank you, Councilmember Barrera.
Yeah, I think Councilor Barrera was asking the question, lying with what I was going to. I mean, is there any opportunities for any grant funding? Because, you know, as I saw, you're gonna have a reduction in services and, you know, resources. I think it's like, you know, you're in survival mode. So, are the businesses that are currently paying into it gonna continue to want to pay into it if they see that reduction?
Yeah, I think that what we've been doing, and this year, was a little more focused on those businesses who have participated and who have been paying their assessments. Our focus has been really putting more services to them than anyone else. I mean, unfortunately, that's what we've had to do. And unfortunately, you know, our goals are smaller, but we're gonna continue to provide that same level of service for those businesses that continue to pay their assessments. They have been very loyal to the organization in the sense of paying those assessments. And so, we will continue to work with those businesses and hopefully grow the businesses. Part of the challenge we had this year is... Part of the, of the challenge we had this year is, for most years, the folks that pay the most don't always pay other amounts. And the funny thing about it is that this year, the ones who pay the most pretty much were the ones who paid. One of the things that fell before us and that we saw is those folks that normally pay that don't pay a lot, so they pay $21, they pay $43. Those were some of the ones that this year didn't pay, and a lot of them didn't pay. And the, the message I got from them wasn't, oh, I'm sorry, I don't like Suba, or sorry, I forgot. It was, you know, I don't know if I can really pay you those $43. The reality is that we know that they probably could, but the, the, they are struggling. And we, we understand that, we see that in the numbers out there. If you see the folks that are out there walking Alacel, the numbers are definitely lower there. But the other thing that we're seeing is, when I first started here eight years ago in Suba, there was no vacancies in the Alacel. There, there's vacancies now in buildings. There's a lot of vacancies now. When I first started here, you know, one of the, the mentions of Councilmember Barrera is that there's business within business, that was because there was no other place to go. Now what's happening is some businesses are within businesses because they can't afford to pay the rent in, in some of these places. And so the rents haven't gone down. Rents are being paid $9,000, $70, $7,200. Rents are, are pretty high in the Alacel, and somehow or another, the businesses continue to, to move forward and pay those rents.
Have you seen, speaking of the higher rents, have you seen, compared to other areas of the city, substantially higher rents in the Alacel?
I, I couldn't compare them to the other areas because I haven't looked at, at, at some of the other areas specifically, but what I can tell you is there's specific shopping centers that are extremely high, more so than I, you would expect them to be in, in Salinas. So, but when, you know, when you're doing well, folks, business owners are okay with those rents, but when, you know, your business has been cut by 30%, 40%, it's, it's tough to make ends meet. And so that's why I think we're starting to see some of our business owners who are a little older, that may have been here for some time, that are going, maybe it's time for me to, to sell the business or to retire.
Have you ever considered a conversation with some of those property owners, the ones, you know?
We've had several conversations with property owners in different ones of our shopping centers. We've actually negotiated contracts for some of our, our business owners, and in some cases, we've been able to bring down by 5%, 10% the rent, or keep the same price for a longer period of time. And we've even negotiated some where the, the owners, the businesses themselves wanted to shorten their, their lease. And so we've done that for, for many of our businesses.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. All right, any, we'll go out to the public, any comment? All right, any comment on Zoom? No comment on Zoom, all right? We will come back and look, so we're looking, this is an action item and we're looking for-
To approve.
Motion to approve receiving the report and set a date for, so there's two.
There you go.
Yeah, okay. And the date to be determined. If I, okay. All right, is there a second for the motion?
Second.
Okay. I was gonna, all right. Any, any final comments?
Mr. Mayor, I just want to say thank you to Mr. Chavez, because as you already know, he's putting it eight years.
Yeah.
And he's out there, and it's not an easy job, so thanks a lot.
Yeah, no, I, I think, I think those are, it's very appropriate to acknowledge your, your good work, and it's, it's got to be a labor of love also, because, you know, to hang in there like that really speaks to your-
It's a good Mexican food.
Your commitment and dedication, so we appreciate that.
Yeah, I just want to thank you also, and tough times, I, I feel really bad. I know Suba has tremendous value to the businesses out there, so we, we applaud you, we hope we can keep it going, and whatever we can do to help as a city, we're, we're here for you. Thank you.
All right, go ahead and call for the question.
Councilmember Barrera?
Yes.
Councilmember DeRigo?
Yes.
Councilmember Salazar?
Yes.
Councilmember Sandoval? Mayor Donahue? Motion passes. Motion passes.
All right, thank you. All right, we're going to proceed to the consent agenda. Matters listed under the consent agenda may be enacted by one motion unless a member of the council would like to request a separate voter discussion, and the pub, and the members of the public may comment on the consent items collectively during their public comment. Would any council member like a separate voter discussion on any of the consent items? I will start by looking to my right.
Sir.
Okay, Andrew. Just for comments, 296. Okay. 317. That's it. Hey, thank you. You good?
96.
296, okay. All right, Jose?
341.
341, okay.
325.
325 is a real, okay.
Nothing to pull, I just will listen in, thank you.
Okay, I'll jump in on 341 also. Okay. Good. All right, so we will proceed to the public and see if anybody has a comment on item, on the consent agenda. Okay? Anybody on Zoom want to talk about the? Okay, Adam, you're up.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, staff, and the public. I won't belabor this, I just wanted to take a moment and recognize our hard-working city officials. You know, sometimes the, the important business is the mundane business, and so in particular tonight, I'm appreciative that you all are handling the defensible space, fire hazard severity zones. Believe it or not, the disclosure of what type of zone someone's in and whether or not there's a local ordinance is all part of the disclosures for every single property transaction. So this may seem like just a bit of routine business tonight, but all the things you have, all the work you all do does have an impact. So thank you all and have a good evening.
Okay, thank you, Adam. Okay, I think that, I think that was it. All right, we will come back and we will talk, we will start with 296, Andrew, then Tony, in that order.
Thank you. Yeah, no, I, I wanted just to, you know, I had received an email from one of my residents about the, it seems like a large amount per sign, and I understand that the company who is fulfilling this contract is building out those signs, but is, is there a particular reason we couldn't have, like those signs purchase stock out of somewhere instead of them being, you know, what I see as expensive?
Just the sheer number of signs that, that we had to put up made us need to go with a contractor to do the work, and we had a short period of time to do it. We were using ARPA money. We did do an RFP to select the consultant, nobody responded to the RFP, so we went to our on-call folks. The on-call folks really didn't want to do it. We had to convince a contractor that, to do the work and under a time constraint, so that's why the, the costs were high, but the sheer number of them, because we don't have the staff to do that in-house.
Thank you. Tony?
Mr. Jacob, it's good to see you. Thank you for this good work. You know, I, I think, being that this was our first week doing this, I guess as we, because there's several partners involved in here, I think as long as we're consistent in our communication, I think every week, every week's going to get better and, so hopefully, I, I did share some concerns with the city manager, he says he's working on them, especially the street sweeper, there's a lot of dust, you know? But I, I'm sure it'll continue to improve, so I just wanted to say thank you for your work. And motion to approve. If that's appropriate?
Yep. But, yep, no, so, so far it is. We don't appear to have to isolate anything at the moment. Is, is there a second?
Okay.
We can do them all at once, so.
There you go.
All right, so we're, we're, we're heading in that direction. All right. Andrew, you want to do 317?
I just want to acknowledge, well, one, I want to make sure that the residents, especially Victor Street, but I know Coventry, are notified that there's still going to be some improvements made to their roads. I don't, I think some of them think that the project was over. And second of all, I want to appreciate the staff. I know that our traffic commission is working to improve this process, and so I appreciate the staff acknowledging and recognizing that there's room for improvement and facilitating these traffic calming projects to move a little bit faster. Thank you.
Very good, thank you, sir. All right, Aurelio, you want to talk about fire hazard severity zones map?
Yes. I'll make it quick. Just want to thank the fire chief for taking the lead on the fire hazard safety zones map and keeping us in compliance with the California Government Code 51179, so thank you.
Well, that was easy.
I said it was a comment, I said it was a comment, yeah. I don't have to speak, I don't have to speak forever.
That's right.
Thank you, chief, thank you.
No comment. All right, Jose, you want to tee up 341?
That's how you do it. Mayor, before the council comments on this item on 341, I just want to highlight something for clarification with respect to the resolution and the action that is being requested. The resolution attached to the report includes authorization of a budget allocation of 227,100 for position, position cost for the general, from the general fund balance. However, the language was left out of the recommended motion in the staff report, in the staff report and on the agenda. So as part of the motion, we would, we will need clear direction from the council when the motion, from the makers of the motion, as to whether to include the budget allocation or any other recommended motion that the council wishes to take at this point.
Okay, well, we haven't got a second yet, so when we-
Second?
Okay, so we have a second, so it sounds like we need to ask the maker of the motion, are you comfortable with that? Okay, sounds good, and-
So just, just to confirm that we're approving the resolution that is attached to the staff report, which includes the workforce allocation adjustment and authorizing the allocation, the budget allocation of 227,100 for the position cost from the general fund balance.
We always assumed we had to pay them.
Yes.
Okay. Very good. No, thank you for-
Except it's a little bit more problematic than that, because it's not included on the agenda as such, it's not included in the recommended motion, or really in the body of the staff report. So we have an inconsistency with respect to the resolution and the staff report on this, and so my recommendation would be that we table this item until the next meeting and bring it back when we have a staff report and a resolution that are consistent.
I'll move to table?
Second.
Is, is a motion to table that, just one item in progress?
Looking at the city manager?
Yep.
Yeah. All right, would, do we need to take a break, or should we?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. I made a break?
The first part of the resolution, and we will bring back the budget allocation piece, so it'll be a revised resolution that gets approved tonight. Assuming that's what the council wants to do.
City manager's good with it too? Okay, great, we are.
I'll start off with two quick questions and then I'll end up with my comment for the police chief on 341. Can you just speak a little bit to the, the positions that we're, you know, approving tonight and start off with that?
Sorry, councilmember, I couldn't hear you.
No, can you, can you just speak a little bit too about what two positions we're allocating tonight for the police department, what the rules will be and how that supports police operations?
Yes, thank you, absolutely. Good evening, so the two positions are the communications specialist and the recruiting coordinator. So the communication specialist will be based in our administrative office, it's going to support the entire police department, you know, work closely to inspire and share the vision of the police department and our priorities moving forward. I mean, it's a key position when it comes to providing those metrics of data that are important, that we need to provide by law through our social media platforms and our website, you know, working as a liaison with our social media partners and our media relations to either highlight exceptional work that's happening throughout the police department, highlight individuals, recognizing employees, and then looking at, at that position to share with the community what our community calendar looks like, some of the events that we're going to participate in throughout the city. And then working closely for media releases, you know, anything that's going on within the community, within the city that's critical, such as traffic alerts, media alerts, critical incidents alerts. I'll give you an example, that accident where a lot of the PG&E indications and information, where there was an accident, that was information that we, we should have been putting out critically immediately, so the community understands area to avoid, what's actually happening in the community there. So a variety of different things that this position will be doing as it relates to engagement and really putting out information to the community. The other one is our recruiting coordinator. It's a position that was actually filled by a full-time officer, but that's a position that we also want to make sure that we look at proactively how we're dealing with our immediate needs, and then how we're projecting future growth and really how to recruit as we start to get into the levels where we need to get to. Working closely with candidates at the intermediate level, all the way through the level of graduation date, providing that mentorship, one-on-one coaching, development throughout the process to making sure that we're staying in contact with them throughout the entire process. You know, this is also an opportunity to make sure that we're engaging with all applicants at all levels, so that we can continue to work with them and work on our retention efforts. You know, explaining the process to sworn staff, you know, coordinating right along stewards of the police department, coordinating our oral board workshops that we typically do, working with them for the PELAB written exam and the WSTB, which is a physical portion of the examination to become a police officer. So those are the things that we're looking to do with those two positions.
And would these be sworn or non-s sworn positions?
Non-s sworn.
Okay. And then maybe this is a tie, like a question for both yourself and Sophie, but speaking more towards the, the public information aspect of the, the first role, the public safety, the communication specialist position, how is that a complement to our PIO? And what benefit is it to having someone in-house that can speak to police department or public safety issues?
Well, it's, they will, first of all, they'll be working, existing together, but it's a major complement to each other as we start to cross-coordinate when it relates to information, data sharing. You know, we're obligated legally to provide a lot of information through our social website as it relates to data and statistics and watch commander entries, so there's also an opportunity for us to really highlight department activities, right? Highlight things that are going on within the agency, what community events that we're able to attend. And it's really highly specialized because this particular individual is going to really be at the forefront of providing that transparency portal to our community. We're often asked for a lot of different data, we're often asked why this information isn't out there, there's, I'm hearing about these other critical events or incidents, we did not hear about them. Or on the flip side is, there's a lot of great things that your department is doing, how come you're not highlighting it? So working collectively with Sophie, I think it's going to be a huge benefit.
Awesome, thank you. And I'll just close out with a quick comment. Want to, reading through the staff report, I recognize that this has come before the finance committee several times, multiple times, so thank you guys for your due diligence and continuing to push for these two positions. I saw that in the staff report explicitly says they were asked to be filled sooner rather than later, and I also appreciate staff's diligence in moving this along very quickly, right? We had a four-week break and, you know, first item, not first item, but you know, one of the first items on our agenda on our first meeting back is moving forward with this position, so happy to support it, thank you.
Yeah, I, I think just a couple things I want to, because I, because I do think this is important, you know, you've done a terrific job, you know, recruiting the numbers and that, and the more it's, it's, it's challenging, so anything that is a time multiplier, force multiplier for, for, for good partner is, is- So, anything that is a time multiplier, force multiplier for the department is, I think, particularly important. And I think it is important to note that...
Keep your mic on.
No. But I think it's important to also note, as you just did, these are not non-sworn positions. So, that also, I think, really speaks to, as you prepare the department for the future, you're obviously looking at sworn officers, but where can a non-sworn position be invaluable to the department, to the community, along with technology? So, I'll just echo Jose. I certainly feel that we got on it right away because it still takes a while to set up shop. So, I think this is important that the council move forward on this. Thank you for that. Okay, so we have a motion to take the calendar in one fell swoop in a second. Any final comments?
Can staff repeat the motion?
It's basically a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Right, the whole consent calendar, but in terms of this particular agenda item, we are...
On the last item, on item 341, you're simply approving how it's listed on the agenda, which is a resolution modifying the workforce allocation for the police department to add one public safety recruitment coordinator position and one public safety communications specialist position, respectively. And the budget allocation will come back at a future meeting.
At a future meeting. Okay. Thank you.
So, the question is whether there's one motion and a second to approve the entire consent agenda or to approve parts separately. My understanding is that we have one motion and one second to approve the entire consent calendar.
What I understand...
Correct. That's my understanding as well.
Thank you.
Great. All right.
So, motion made by council member Barrera, second by council member Barajas to approve the consent calendar. Council member Barajas?
Yes.
Council member Barrera?
Yes.
Council member DeRigo?
Yes.
Council member Salazar?
Yes.
Council member Sandoval?
Yes.
Mayor Donahue?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Very good. Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. All right. Well, she's back. All by yourself.
All by myself.
Not a group accompanying you this go around, huh? A solo act?
Yes, solo act. So, good evening again. I'm here to present an administrative report. No action required for this item. And this is to share with you the economic opportunities map that our GIS team has been working very diligently to put together. And we've worked with our executive team and staff to help identify the information highlighted in the map that you're going to see this evening. So, the economic opportunities map is a way that will help us visualize economic investment opportunities and help us identify development opportunities as well through data storytelling. So, a lot of times we have a lot of information and living in several different places, and this gives us one way that we can start to visualize how all of those projects and the different things happening within the city and the amenities that we have in our city, how they all work together. And here shortly, I'll show you a little demonstration of what the map looks like and some examples of how that works. It also gives us an opportunity to track ongoing projects in Salinas in a way that we can share information publicly using the map as a tool. So, the economic opportunities map will live on the city website. So, starting with just going to the homepage, selinas.gov, and navigating across the top, and you'll go to the businesses tab, and that's where the economic opportunities map will live. So, as you see, there's four different tabs. We have projects, recreational amenities, community, and specific plans and business corridors. What you'll notice on every tab is that there's a legend off to the side as well as a search bar function. So, you can, if there's a specific project that you're looking for, rather than having to zoom in and search, you can just type it in. And here's an example, Ensen Community Park, that has some great information about the park status and a link that takes you to more information. So, this could be a PDF or a website, and in this case, it's celebrating the upcoming event this Sunday. So, you'll notice the purple and the blue colors on the legend, and blue represents city projects and the purple represents non-city projects. So, they're still very important in the context of economic development and celebrating things that are happening within the city, but we do want to distinguish visually who's leading the initiative. And in those pop-up boxes, there's also an opportunity to add that information in there as well. So, the projects are, again, projects that align and support our economic development goals. And that's another example of a project in South Salinas near the airport. So, the next tab is recreational amenities, and this is where I was talking about the visualization. So, you can see a lot of our recreational amenities are very centralized in Salinas. So, knowing where everything is, this kind of paints that picture where you can really see where everybody goes to for things like the rodeo and the soccer complex. They're all very centrally located. So, the map also includes our community parks, neighborhood parks, golf courses, for example. So, it's going to zoom in here so you can see one of the golf courses by the airport. And this is good for visitors, and it's also good information if people are coming to look to develop to understand what recreational amenities Salinas has to offer. Zooming in here to South Salinas, we have our California Welcome Center, First Mayor's House, National Steinbeck Center. So, again, an opportunity to highlight those amenities that perhaps tourists want to come and visit or locals want to check out. And then we have our sports complex and, of course, I mentioned earlier, our new community park. So, the next tab is your community and specific plan areas. And so, some of these plans are community-driven and some are city-driven. So, we have our future growth area that has our West Central and future East Area specific plan. And then, zooming across here, there's some examples of some community-led plans. And we also have some other ones highlighted up in North Salinas as well. The last tab is our business corridors. So, we have our downtown and Suba districts that are highlighted on there. So, as you zoom in, you can see the boundaries for each of those districts. And then, as you scroll up north, you can see some of the other shopping centers that are in Salinas. So, this is really just an overview for you to highlight the work that our GIS team has been doing, really reinforcing the importance of economic development and what's coming down the pipeline with that. And one thing I do want to mention, this is a living map. So, it will be, more projects will be added to it. Projects will come off as they're completed, and it's a living, growing resource that will be available to our community and to staff, obviously, to use as we're looking at the economic development and growth of the city.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Andrew, any questions? We'll start. Okay, Tony?
Thank you, Mayor. I mean, this is great. Mr. Romo, in your report, enhancing public engagement, how does that look?
Public engagement with the economic opportunities map? Yeah, I mean, you know, there are, I know we have discussed it with business stakeholders and kind of shared the preliminary idea for the map, but, again, the most impactful piece is that it's a visual data tool that we can use because all of the technical stuff, all of the numbers and everything can sometimes get a little lost in translation. So, being able to visualize it and really see how all of the projects and things that we have going on in the city and things we have to offer, being able to visualize that in one spot, just like those recreational amenities, really seeing where that is and where the growth opportunities are. On the demo, I forgot to scroll down, but MCOE is building a conference center. That's something that's really big and coming. And we may not have known about that, but we learned about it through this process. And that's a perfect example, some conference space that's going to seat up to 500 people. It's not a city-led project, but it's something that we absolutely want to highlight as we start to look at growing and attracting businesses and things.
I know your report says that the city manager has been working with the GIS team, but the stakeholders, the business people, the people that are really involved, that they have a part in this plan, in this map?
Well, I mean, I think the projects, the plan is, the part is their projects, right? We're highlighting their projects. So, that's sort of a fundamental start and plan. But the other thing is, we need, we're trying to create a tool that allows us to communicate more effectively and allows us to work with all our stakeholders to share our vision and to align it to what this council, to your strategic planning, is directing us as the important elements, right? So, part of it is can we create the visuals so we can have a much more informed conversation? And so, yes, we have gotten a lot of input from just the projects and so forth from that perspective. We are not going to share it out and see kind of the responses and where we have to adjust and fine-tune. And are we telling the story the way that's the most impactful? Because I think one of the missing pieces is we have not done a good job of telling our story. You saw today the phenomenal youth that we have. These are youth that are graduating, have graduated from our high schools, are going to graduate from our high schools and are moving on to do a lot of incredible stuff. So, we just have not been telling our story. I don't think to the way that we should be telling our story. So, this will help there.
Jose?
Thank you, Mayor. Along those same lines, when you speak to this, that there was some stakeholder engagement done on this, can you just elaborate more on what exactly you mean by stakeholder engagement? Like, did you guys convene a group of business stakeholders and present this idea, or is this the first time this is kind of going out public?
Yes. We presented the idea to a group of business stakeholders that were business stakeholders, city manager, assistant city manager, and they really liked the idea. So, we displayed sort of a prototype, so to speak, of the map and the type of information that was going to be displayed, and we received really positive feedback that it would be a really great tool. And same things, the ability to take all of the stuff that's happening and put it in a simple visual thing that allows you to navigate, they really appreciated the interactivity and the simplification of everything.
Awesome. And then, who's our target audience for this particular map? And the reason I bring it up is because it was brought up that this could be used for residents, this could be used for businesses, for developers, for tourists, but it's under the business tab of the city's website, right? I think we just, I'd like to get a little bit more clarity on like, who exactly is our target audience? Because if I'm a developer, I'm looking for different information than someone who's a tourist as opposed to someone who's a resident or someone who's a homegrown business owner. Is there anything within this? I mean, there's four separate tabs, business corridors, projects, recreational amenities, community and specific planners. Pretty much all those sound more business-oriented or development-oriented.
Yeah, I mean, there's still an opportunity for us to promote each of the tabs separately, right? I always feel like we have this big message, and our message, or the full message, may not resonate with everybody, but everybody wants a piece of something, right? Like, the recreational amenities could be absolutely useful for our residents. I think our audience is everybody, just to the city manager's point. You know, we need to do a better job with storytelling, and they may also be interested in some of the projects that are on the dashboard. So, to that point, given that it's called the Economic Opportunity Map and on the city side, we have the opportunity to use it as a tool as we're looking at development, we also have it living on the transparency page on the website as well. And we'll do some promotion of each of the specific tabs and whatever calls to people, whatever tab resonates with them most, they'll engage and interact with the map in that way.
Thank you. Just, I don't know if this is the appropriate time, more so like a suggestion, but one thing that would be neat to see would be, whenever you click within, say, like a project, say there's a shopping center, like the East Aliso Shopping Center is the one that comes to mind visually, is there an opportunity to kind of input additional data within that tab that opens that specifies like, oh, this is a key opportunity for retail or for food or for, you know, by industrial? And, you know, these are the types of things that you can use. Do we have the capacity or ability to continue to add on to that?
The fields are customizable, and the information that we put in there is, you know, staff puts that together. And so, there's absolutely an opportunity. We would just look for consistency across the board so everybody knows what to expect when they click on the tab.
And I didn't think that was the intent of sharing this. Just keep your thoughts. Are we hitting the mark, not hitting the mark? What are we missing? Today, the finance committee saw an economic development work plan that will be presented to the council, so that would also be aligning to some of this as well. And so, I just, I think it's just developing some of the foundational pieces that all of you have been asking us to develop and bring to you. And now, you give us your feedback, and we go back and fine-tune it, or we need to do something different, then we do it, and then we bring it back. So, we got to start somewhere.
Awesome. Yeah, thank you. Appreciate it.
Arilio?
No comments or questions. Thank you.
Margaret?
I have a couple, just for clarity. So, this map was created by staff and a consultant, I'm assuming, someone that helped you, or just 100% internal?
Yes. Our GIS team is amazing. They have some great tools at their disposal, so I can't express enough. This was all city staff work and then also collaboration between the executive team and city staff to pull the information together that's highlighted on the map.
Okay, thank you. So, this is the first time that we've seen it. I still need to kind of digest it a little bit more, but I think it's a step in the right direction. I'm curious, like, who monitors that and how frequently is it updated?
So, currently, it would be under the city manager's office, and so that would be myself and my, I'm sure there will be some connection to the economic development staff that's going to be coming on board. It is absolutely essential that we update this on a regular basis, and so it will probably be more frequently in the beginning until we get it to the place that we really like it with all of the feedback. So, at least on a biweekly basis, we'll be doing updates to allow our GIS team enough time to make any updates or corrections. And then, once we get it at a regular pace, at least a monthly basis, but as needed.
And then, you know, we get a lot of comments from the public about transparency and inclusion, and, you know, people want to be involved in the process. So, hopefully, we're including not only business stakeholders, but just people from the community in general. And I'm wondering, have you worked with Spark and those folks? Are they part of this process or, I'm assuming?
This was presented to them.
Okay.
So, we got some initial feedback from that entire economic development stakeholder group that we've been working with. So, that was one of the initial presentations. And I think here's the key. We're trying to visualize, show visually everything that's happening. Nothing here is created by the city specifically, per se. The soccer complex, right? They give us information. We reached out to MCOE to get information on the upcoming conference center. So, we are reaching out to our stakeholders and our partners to populate the information.
Okay.
So, as this more develops, you know, what a great tool to say, as we're trying to attract more hotel or hospitality, look, here's the soccer, here's some of the data and some of the visitors that come in Car Lake. So, it's a lot of that. And so, I think it's, most of this has been done, these are all projects that are being worked on, our cluster parks have already been approved. We get a lot of information about, are we giving the community updated? So, hopefully, this is another tool to provide that the people can go to get some updated information without having to call us or to wait for a council meeting, but it will be there, right? They can always come back and give us more feedback, and we will continually ask for the feedback.
Perfect. Thank you. And I'm all in favor of telling our story. I think we don't do it enough. So, I think this is a great tool for that, and hopefully, it will bring people to our site, and they'll find more interesting things there as well. Thanks. Appreciate your report.
Thank you, Margaret. All right. We will head out to the public. Any comment? Good. All right. Okay, and no action is needed, by the way. And I see Adam is still up. Adam, you can, you have the floor.
Hi, everybody. Thanks, everybody. Again, I just want to recognize all the hard work that staff are doing and thank the council for starting this conversation. Looking forward to having more and more of a dialogue about the opportunities for Salinas. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Adam. Okay. All right. We will come back to council for final comments. There is no action on this. Any final comments? All right.
See, started a trend.
All right, all right. With that, we will, you're still here?
I'm still here. One more.
Well, we can't get enough of you tonight. So why don't you, why don't you just stay, stay up there but change the topic?
All right, perfect. So again, another administrative report does not require council action, but wanted to share this, this milestone with everybody and with the council. So the City of Salinas Communication Outreach and Engagement Strategy. Let me see here. There we go. So the last time that this, the communication strategy was updated was in 2016. So it's been like nine years-ish, and so a lot has changed in that time from best practices in communication to really what our communication, what our community needs from us in terms of the way we engage. The pandemic is a prime example. A lot of people went digital in the way that they engage, even foot traffic in City Hall has decreased from pre-pandemic to post-pandemic in person. And so that means that we need to also evolve our, the way that we're engaging with our residents. So the, the goals of the communication strategy, there are five key goals, informing the, the public as an essential service. And so sometimes I don't think we think about communication as a service, but it's a huge service that we provide to our community. The more that we hear about, you know, information and transparency and access, encouraging more civic engagement. And that ranges from our youth, like we saw today, to, you know, the 80% of the community that may not be engaged with us regularly, but we still want to hear from them because they're an important voice within our community as we make decisions. Support and advance equity through outreach and engagement, ensure consistent, consistent and strategic branding and messaging. So kind of trying to get to, the goal is to get to that one voice. So we're all communicating in the same way and we're all planning our outreach and engagement in the same way. And defining roles is, is really important. Prior to, to the creation of my position three and a half years ago, there was no full-time public information person for the city of Salinas. So really defining those roles in terms of communication, outreach and engagement, both for leadership, for departments and as well as myself. So some of, just some of the highlights that are in the communication strategy, we really want to get to a point of proactivity. So being proactive in our communication rather than reactive, there are going to be probably majority of the times that we will need to kind of catch up and be a little bit reactive. But the more that we can anticipate questions that are going to come or the level of outreach that might be needed beyond the legal minimum requirement, the, the more trust that will build within the community and then the more effective conversations that we can have. We also, again, want to encourage civic engagement, making sure that we're defining key terms in a way that is understandable in common language. A lot of times, we use very technical terms. And working with the youth is like a prime example. When we would come across a technical term, I would say, okay, if you were sitting with your friends, how would you explain it to them? And so understanding that it's really important for people to understand the things that the city are doing in common language. Identifying barriers to participation and doing our best to remove those barriers. Branding and marketing is really important. And then also really focusing on strategies and, and processes when it comes to communication. The, the success of us getting to, to where we want to be, where we're communicating with one voice and being consistent in our communication is really going to be working together as a team, cross-departmentally, to share information, to break down information silos and, and training to get, to work towards implementing the communication strategy. And so what that looks like is we're going to work together with every department to identify at least one person from their department to serve on a communications committee where we will all work together to identify, okay, what are, where do we need training? What does that training look like? And then really to empower them to be the liaisons or the leaders within, within their department for communications, outreach and engagement to live and breathe this document. So that, so we work together to, to achieve that goal. And with that.
All right, thank you. All right. Margaret, any questions?
I was just going to ask you, where will this be displayed? Will it be on our website? Or how do people know that, the new exciting stuff that we're doing? Where will we find this?
Yeah, so this is primarily a staff document in order to, you know, for training purposes. But we'll absolutely, you know, provide highlights, you know, to the community to, to celebrate like our progresses. You see, we do that all of the time in LinkedIn and celebrating milestones within the work that we're doing.
Good. So there'll be a significant amount of community engagement, community input. I mean, I guess I'm just thinking like, are we going at the community and asking them, how do they want to be communicated to? You know, everyone wants it differently.
Yeah, I mean, there's been many touch points since the time that I've been in this role. We, we have done surveys before where we asked the community, what ways work better for you, website, email, text messages. We've been expanding more on the email, text message, for instance, and we get a lot of feedback that I receive directly about the, the text messaging really being more beneficial than the email because people see it immediately on their phone. But then we also receive the same feedback that on the website is, is a better opportunity. So really, this is a tool for us to take all of the feedback that we receive from the community. And my team regularly monitors social media and social media comments. And so the feedback that we're getting from the community through those channels, which is a lot of times raw feedback, you know, we're integrating that. That's part of the strategy. We have to monitor what the community is saying. We have to gauge how well we're, a message that we put out or a, a community meeting that we held, you know, was received by the community and whether they felt like we engaged with them in, at the right level. And so part of what's in, one of the, the strategies in the communication, in the communication strategy is to ensure that we're asking those questions after we have a community meeting and really just be open to receiving the feedback. Because communication is not just a unilateral, black and white, this is the way you do it. There's so, there's a level of decision-making that has to go into it. So it depends on the project. It depends on who you're trying to reach. An example that I give is if you're doing engagement, like broad community, the best practice is to have the meeting in the evening, provide dinner and childcare. However, if you're trying to engage with the business community, perhaps a lunchtime brown bag type of meeting is better. So it's not a cookie cutter. You have to look at who you're engaging with and, you know, to work hand in hand with the communication strategy, we'll be developing a simplified guide with my, with the communications committee to be able to help staff navigate that decision-making process.
Excellent. Well, I think, I think this is great and thank you for making it a priority. I think it's really important.
Aurelio?
Yes, I did see that you had a section regarding the crisis communication and just wanted to acknowledge you for making sure that that was, that was in there. To me, I know that that is something of particular importance as it often relates to like, you never know when the next fire, flood, or earthquake may happen. I know a couple of weeks back, you know, received those text messages from the city manager. There was that, that big major earthquake. And on social media, there was a lot of talk of potential tsunami. And as far away as we were from, from a tsunami, the communication, the communication was there, right? And as a city, I think that's something that a lot of residents will want to know about in the event of like a major, you know, fire, flood, or, or earthquake. So making sure that you've kind of covered your, your bases in developing this plan needs to be acknowledged. So thank you.
Thank you, Aurelio. Okay, any questions to my right? Jose?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you so for the presentation. Question on slide number four, on some of the highlights, you speak to some of the branding and marketing roles that you take on. Particularly touching on the branding and particularly use of logos, is it best practice nowadays to have a different logo for every department? And I'll bring up an example, right? So we have this logo here. We have a different seal for the city of Salinas. Library and Community Services has their own logo. Salinas Clean Water has their own logo. How does that impact our branding and our messaging?
So no, the short answer is no, that it's not the best practice, right? One of the, the things that happens is that people start to think of certain departments as separate from the city and forget that they're part of the city. So same thing with multiple social media pages. While it is a practice in local government to have, you know, different social media pages, it also dilutes the brand. And I think that you can, you can see, you can see that if you look, compare like the number of followers on some pages to other pages. So recognizing though, however, that, that those departments have had those logos and, and brand recognition for so long, it also is not a best practice just to, to scrap those at this point, right? And this is where the collaboration piece works in. And so it's ensuring that the city logo is right next to the Parks and Rec or on the same flyer, right? Making sure that the, the city logo is present when other communications are going out. And so that's the starting point for us. And then, you know, through the communication committee and the assistant city manager and city manager will work towards what the future looks like.
Okay, awesome. Thank you for that clarification. Do you happen to know when the city of Salinas adopted this, this logo and this tagline, rich in land, rich in values, in this particular?
Pulling from my history, I want to say 2014 or 2015 because it was, I think, right before I started with the city.
Okay, awesome. Yeah, I just bring that up because you mentioned, you know, the last time we updated this communications plan was 2016 and how much, you know, the area of communications and the way that our community engages with the city and municipalities has changed. I'd also be keen and interested to see if, you know, maybe it's time for us to also reconsider our own branding and our own image, perhaps exploring and opening it up to the community, submitting, you know, opening up to our high school students or youth, you know, artistically. Submit your proposal. What is the city of Salinas for you today, right? Is rich in land, rich in values still relevant to our community today and the vision that we have moving forward? I think it's a good timing, particularly as we update, you know, the general plan. I think it kind of all goes congruently with one another. I think that's more of a comment than, than a question now that I articulate it. But yeah, that's all my questions and comments. Thank you, Jose. Tony?
Thank you. You know what, and I think our city manager is taking us in the direction of trying, instead of being different silos, working as a team. One of the things that I see in your report, communication is critical. I mean, but, okay, so Barrera called City Hall and I have a question. You have some good staff that have walked through, somebody calls and they walk them through the process. But then you have a majority of the staff that's, oh, you called the wrong department, you got to call, you understand what I'm saying? That's broken communication right there. So in knowing what the city manager's doing right now, he's got a hard task, how do you think we're improving in our communication when somebody comes and needs City Hall for whatever? Were you able to walk them through the process instead of just letting them go? Makes sense?
Yeah, no, absolutely. I, I kind of go back to the, the statement that I said, that communication is an essential service, right? We, we communicate every day, whether verbally, whether handing somebody a piece of paper, nonverbal communication, it, it's an essential service. And, you know, I think there's, there's layers to your question, but I think the, you have to start somewhere. And the starting point is the message, you know, and beginning to get staff to embrace that communication is an essential service and thinking that way in terms of communication.
Yeah, and I think, and, and thank you for that. And I think one of the, because to me, treating a human being with dignity is the most important thing when somebody needs assistance. And I sincerely mean that. But this city has spent thousands of dollars on customer service training. How do you train an employee if they don't feel it, if it doesn't come out of them? I mean, you can only read so many textbooks. So as we're communicating and improving service as you're hiring new employees, yeah, so they already come with their credentials, rich in values, rich in certificates, whatever, what their attitude, you understand? Do they like people? So that's my biggest thing in communication. I don't care how educated you are. What I care is about how do you treat the person that's coming in? Is this, and I'm, I'm going to buy a city manager an energy drink here, but how are we improving in that area?
So one, one of the things in, in my communications world that I've learned is the way people learn is different, or the way people communicate is different. I'm a communicator from the heart, passion and, and, but others communicate, you know, head, heart, hand. So some people are more thoughtful, some people are doers. So when you're trying to do citywide training and make culture change and, and changes in the way people think about communication or, or their jobs, you know, it's going to take time. It's not going to be overnight, but that's the purpose of the communication committee. We get there through cross-departmental collaboration. We get there by slowly breaking down those information silos. We get there by partnering with our other city staff and really starting to make that, that change. So when we have new employees that come in, that's how they're trained. That's what they know, that, that communication is a service, right?
Thank you. Andrew?
I like the approach that, you know, we're going to do intentional communication. I know some councils or some cities have like an after council report of all the agenda items that were covered and some of the decisions made. And then we were doing for a while the, the pre-city council meeting, what's coming up on the agenda. I know a lot of it has to do with maybe capacity. I know you're doing a lot of different things, but is there something we can include in the plan so we standardize some of these things so people learn to expect that?
Yeah, absolutely. And I think, you know, just as there's opportunities across the city, but me and my staff, we also need to be held accountable for, you know, consistency in, in those messagings. So we're working through a plan in the year specific instance to ensure that we have those video messages because we've received a lot of the pre-council meeting, feedback on the pre-council meeting videos that we've been posting from the community as well as community partners. So, so yeah, it's going to be, it's going to be a process and just as much as we're the leaders in training, we also will work to kind of fine tune some of the things for consistency in our department as well.
Right. And we heard a little bit about, I think, that one of the gentleman that was here spoke about wanting to be part of like an interim program. And I think part of what he was getting at is, you know, learning how to communicate with the city or how the city communicates, learning about the processes. So maybe as part of your outreach, it's educating the public on how to participate or how things actually work, which I think you're incorporating here and there, I see. I just, I just want to know how we can be, I don't want to, this is such a unique thing for the city, right? This communication plan is something that the previous council was pushing, so we would have some kind of standards. So I'm really excited that it's coming forward. But what can we include in there so, you know, it carries on, right? Not that next year, for some reason, there's a change in leadership and then somebody else comes and then we are not doing what we were doing to begin with. How do we, how do we add something?
Well, you know, before, from a technical perspective, but I, I think part of it is just shifting how we approach things, and that takes time. So part of it is, I constantly referred to, I spoke to it, when we hire, make that an expectation and manage to that. So that's number one. Number two is work with our employees. Sophie's put together with a lot of the team, where now we're engaging with the entire workforce at least once a quarter, where it's either me or somebody else making presentations and answering questions and just modeling that. And also, you know, giving opportunity for more employees to come in front and make presentations to the council. And how do we, how do we model that and how do we set the expectation, right? So things that we've done, Sophie's put together, we've put together a template on presentations. We're still working towards that. We're trying to standardize things, but we're also trying to allow for some flexibility. The youth talked about the surprise that they have flexibility. We are actually training the workforce on, it's, it's, how can you be innovative in public? With all our processes, all our community expectations, all the things we get called out on a daily basis, it's hard to be innovative because we kind of take that out of the equation. So how do we bring that back into the equation? So now we're intentionally training to that. The next thing you're going to see is you're going to see some opportunity to employees have an idea, how do we leverage it? Do we, am I, am I able to carve aside some money to sort of innovate? Do we, am I, am I able to carve aside some money to sort of innovate? The other thing is working on an AI policy. Can we use AI to help support? You talk about council reports. Can we take what happened, put it in, and we review it, and then it goes out? So it doesn't take a ton of staff writing it, right? There's a lot of things that we have to start using technology, but we have to be careful about how we use it. So we're gonna start field testing a lot of this and bringing it to, to you, does this hit the mark? Kind of like the economic opportunity map. This is just the beginning of a few other things that are gonna start hitting. And then you're gonna tell us whether we're hitting the mark, not hitting the mark, whether we need to do something different. But I think Councilmember Sandoval, your point's right on, how do we make it so it outlives all of us? It just becomes how we do things. So next time we have six more interns, so in 10 years, you've had, you know, 10 interns every year of 20 or 30 or 40 or 50. And what about if we have 10 adults? They get up there, participate in some sort of adult internship program, right? So I, I think we just start building to that. And that's what you see in successful cities, that you stay on it. So we're gonna start talking about multi-year budget plans. We're gonna start talking about things like that. How do we sustain in a, in a city? And by the way, we are a large city. We are the, what, 32nd or 33rd? I mean, you have to go pretty far to find another larger city. How do we develop processes to sustain election, sustain what our community demands and all the things, all the costs and pressures you get all the time? So we have to start, and this is the next piece of that start.
Right, one of the, the reasons that I think, I think two years ago, we were pushing for this to come forward was because, like you, you heard Councilmember DeRigo say earlier, what's our outreach, you know? And with the council for many years was having the exact same conversation. You heard Councilmember Barrera say, well, did we communicate to the residents past the 300 feet? I don't know how many times in the last five years I've heard a council member say the exact same thing. Did we go up above and beyond that? So I know this is not as detailed in, for example, the 300 foot rule, but instead of having council members say the same thing every council meeting about outreach, what can we incorporate in the plan or what can we know that say, yeah, the legal requirement is 300 feet in a notice in the Monterey County Weekly, but we already know what's gonna happen. We're gonna get residents from beyond 300 feet say, I didn't know. So is, is there something that could be incorporated in the plan to address that?
Yeah, absolutely. So if I can rewind to 2016, the communication strategy was simply that strictly about communication, how to write a press release, how to use a, a letterhead template, how to use and size the logo. It hadn't, it didn't have any emphasis on outreach and engagement, which is why it was intentional, although it's a long title, you know? Working with key staff, with Monica Gormelan, with Ana Umbres, Estefani Avargas, we worked together to identify what our outreach and engagement needs were, and these were key staff that live and breathe this, right? Especially with Ana and Monica having that hands-on experience with ALCAL vibrancy plan development and implementation. So their role in this, really the outreach and engagement piece of it, a lot of that was built through their, their work, knowledge and experience. So there, in the communication strategy, you'll see the spectrum of community engagement that comes directly from the ALCAL vibrancy plan. You know, I know in, in grants, we often reference that the ALCAL vibrancy plan for us really set the standard in how we move forward with outreach and engagement. And so it, it would be a misstep if that, those same concepts and strategies were not included in the, in the communication, in the updated communication strategy. So yes, there is reference to needing to consider barriers, needing to consider who it is that we're, we're engaging with, but it also goes hand in hand with, with the staff training. And it, and it is gonna take time. It takes time to change the way that we've been doing things, but this is really, it's a big step for us to have gone through, you know, this update and to really, really focus on changing the way that we think about citywide, you know, outreach and engagement.
Right, and one of my, I think, since I've been in office, I've, I've noticed there's always, maybe not always, but there's a limited group of people who get engaged, right? In the Chamber of Commerce, maybe SUBA, you know, the Salinas City Center, I heard of this term spark for this committee, which, of course, I'm gonna have questions about that later. But, you know, give you an example, in North Salinas, I do not have a business association. And the chamber is a member-driven, you know, fee-based. So, you know, my, my residents are not members of SUBA. And so, you know, for, for my residents in District Five to be able to be engaged, you know, what, what are we doing to engage other people? So I didn't see anything in the plan to specifically identify businesses at large. And then we want to be intentional, but I, I just want that to be on, on top of mind, that there needs to be other opportunities other than these membership organizations or, my residents may not be part of, or my businesses may not be part of. And then the, you know, recently, we, this council repealed rent stabilization and tenant protections, and my frustration was that we didn't, one, let the public know it was even gonna be on the agenda. Number two, we didn't let them know that it had been voted on. And what I was told was that, well, that wasn't the direction the council gave. So with this communication plan, will it not be item by item? It will be standardized, like this was the after-action report, this might be how it affects you, or, or will we, I mean, this is the, the purpose of this, right? To make it so it's uniform, not just pick and choose, right?
Yeah, yes, but as I alluded to before, communication and the way we approach it is not cookie cutter. So every, every situation you, you have to project, obviously, that is a high engagement, a topic of high interest, I think, is how I've identified it previously, that we know we're gonna get a lot of engagement. And so then therefore, that merits taking extra steps. But just like in crisis communications and pulling from the, the PIO world and, and public safety, it's always a cost, constant process of improvement. So yes, there's, we're never, you know, if we get it 100% right, I will be thrilled and jumping to the moon, but, you know, there's always gonna be an opportunity for improvement. You know, so we always take that feedback, we're constantly evaluating, you know, the feedback that we receive publicly and directly and incorporating that into our thought process or our strategy for the next time we are communicating on a project of a similar nature or an initiative of a similar nature.
So I didn't see it specifically on there, but as we, as we, you know, obviously, a large percentage of our population is Spanish speakers, and right now currently, it's my understanding that the only way they could listen to the Spanish version is if they're here present. So would part of this plan be in the future, if we bring this back, be able to address, for example, Spanish speakers having access to these city council meetings after the fact, not just if they're here?
There, there, as City Manager Mendez had alluded to, AI is a huge opportunity, and there are software opportunities out there for, you know, multilingual, multi-language translation in real time. And so those are always opportunities that we can explore. And I think, again, it goes back to just reemphasizing that, you know, communication is a service and using that as our starting point and then as, as the starting point for us to start to explore the other opportunities that are out there. And then I, I do also want to add, you know, on the communication strategy, it doesn't dive so much into specificity of, you know, every single scenario because then it would be like a, you know, a huge, we wouldn't even be able to pick it up. But, you know, the, the idea is that this is really a map, a framework for us to, to start to get on the same, speaking the same language, so to speak, or engaging residents in the same way with consistency. But it, it also is a living document. So at a minimum, it will be updated every two years, but as communication strategies change or the needs of our community change, it will also be updated as appropriate.
Thank you. Okay. All right. Anybody from the public? Okay, I, I see everyone's doing hand signals now from the public, okay. Anyone Zooming? All right. This is not, there's no action required here if there are any final comments. Sure.
Well, thank you very much, Sophie. I know this has been a long time coming. I, I know the city manager's being intentional about trying to, you know, address the silos and, and really funnel information and give the city a unified message. I know that's, you know, it's gonna require buy-in from a lot of folks, so I'm glad that you're on it. I, I would like us to be, I know, I would love a giant book that we can't carry as long as it's serving our residents, right? Because I, like I said, I've, I've seen council meetings from six years ago and the council members say the exact same thing about outreach. Sorry, Tony, yes. Gloria and Mayor, but I think there's some low-hanging fruit. I know maybe the, the next time we revisit it, but there's, there's opportunities to, for example, livestream our city council meetings on Instagram and Facebook. I mean, so many other small jurisdictions are already doing that. Some of them also either livestream or simultaneously broadcast Spanish translation on their Zoom meetings. It's, it's, it's unfair, and I think it's low-hanging fruit not to be doing that for our residents. And we can start doing that immediately. There is a, there's a long list of, of improvements, but this is, this is a big step. So I want to thank you, Sophie, for all your work on this. And just, just hopefully, and some of my questions could be translated into comments because there's just so much better we could do. And we hear, you know, even on things like our sewer rates, you know, my, my colleagues were saying, well, what are we gonna do to communicate? But that was kind of already after the fact, you know? So there, there's just so much room for improvement. So thank you very much, and hopefully you can translate my questions into comments as well. Thank you.
Anything else?
Well, I agree with him, but I, I, I think you're already doing that, Sophie. Just in listening and, and watching the communication that goes from the city to the people, there's a lot of communication going on already, and I want to thank you for that. And I appreciate the work. The city manager's greatest asset as far as this public servant is concerned is his integrity. And where I see him building morale with his staff, in turn, that staff will better serve our community, and I see it happening already. But thank you.
All right, thank you, Mayor. So thank you, Sophie, for the presentation. Just wanted to highlight to all and remind us all that, you know, you put this presentation together, but you pretty much are our public information department, right? Our communications department. It's yourself and Giselle. So kudos to you for doing all that you do with the two-woman team, right? Not our only two-woman team, I'm seeing our city clerk over here, Alexis and Patty as well. So just kudos for everything that you're doing with, you know, the resources that you've been giving and just looking forward to all the improvements that we'll be able to make over the coming years. And really looking forward to add some of the AI implementation. I know I've had discussions with the city manager on, you know, how can we make these city meetings more accessible? And this is definitely a great first step into moving and making our meetings more accessible, increasing that public engagement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Really. Just want to thank you for putting together this report and the work that you do. I know a lot of other organizations, they have their public information officer or communications And one thing that I've brought up with some other organizations that I've worked with in the past is that, you know, quite often, you do work alone, right? And sometimes when it comes to like mentoring or networking, right? Just in terms of like professional networks with other public information officers or communication officers, there really needs to be that, that network. And I brought that up. I know that we have other larger institutions here in the City of Salinas that they also have their respective public information officers. I know sometimes that there's this mentality of like, oh, it's us versus them, but I think it would be very beneficial to like even initiate a network, could be a morning coffee group, or it could be a lunch group or a brown bag lunch group where public information officers like yourself and with other agencies. And, and mostly, we're gonna find that those are the school districts, right? But school districts, right? That's our way of getting back to like children and family and really having that, that network and learning from them as well, what some of the best practices are or what's trending in terms of communications. I know that some of our hospitals and even some of our clinics, they have a staff of eight, right? Because there's like somebody that does just flyers. There's someone's that's just tracking what's being put on social media. And then there are those that are creating like images. And then there's like the team of two that are putting videos together, right? And having to draft the content. And so there are some public information officers that I just have, you know, professional working relationships with. And they say it is a real challenge. And I want to go on record that I understand that this role for one person is very challenging. There are organizations, like I said, have like eight. And so quite often, public information officers are having to take on the role of like eight different individuals. And so I just want to make sure that you know that I, that I as a council member understand that and that every morning, you don't know what's gonna hit your plate because you might have, it's like, some people go, going into work, it's like, here's what I'm gonna get done today? A, B, and C. But then there's that crisis communication that has to come in. And then that's where you, you come in. So it's having the ability to pivot at any given moment. And so just want to acknowledge you for that, that work. This isn't easy. You always come in with a smile and you get it done, and we appreciate all that you do for the city. Thank you.
Margaret?
Okay, well, I think we're heading in the right direction. I, I just want us to see the importance of celebrating every good thing that happens in Salinas, like really just pushing it out there. Because I think people assume if they don't hear anything, they assume we're doing nothing, but we know we're doing a lot. So for example, my constituents, when they, when they planted the trees on California Street, people were blowing up my phone. They were so excited. I'm like, that's, they wanted to celebrate that because they were really happy to have a new tree. So I think those things are really important. And keep up the good work, you're doing a great job. Thanks.
Okay, very good. You get to call it a night.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. All right, we will now get the final council member reports, appointments, future agenda items. Andrew, I'll start with you.
All right, well, first I want to thank Joey Alvarado, he facilitated a neighborhood grants meeting. I think we had like over 14 residents from across Salinas, people were excited to share their ideas, but they also expressed some concerns about the process, especially having to upfront the funds, you know, to get a neighborhood grant and, and have to, you know, if you get a $6,000 grant, imagine not everyone can fork out $6,000. I know there's some, some ways to have the city pay some vendors, but some projects require people to pay out of pocket. So in the future, if we can look at addressing that. Also, I've, I've had a chance to speak to many residents who have had all kinds of interesting notices for increase, not only just of rent, but security deposits and random charges and fluctuations in trash and utilities. I've directed them to our housing department, but I think in the future, we need to hold a community meeting to educate landlords and tenants about some of these issues. I don't think getting a notice that all of a sudden your deposit is gonna be increased after you've already been there for three years is appropriate. Northridge Night Market, so there was an inaugural Northridge Night Market last Wednesday, two Wednesdays ago, very well attended. I don't know what, probably thousands of people. What makes this market unique is that they have a lot of small vendors that typically wouldn't have an opportunity to be in Northridge Mall. So a lot of mom and pop businesses and just entrepreneurs starting out, as well as food trucks and all kinds of stuff. They had a pony rides and bull riding, and they do need volunteers to help keep this great community event going. It's a, there's gonna be free food if you volunteer and you get to help out a great community event. August 16th, What's Grub in Salinas is coming, hot August nights. I think it's gonna be from 10:00 AM to 10:00 PM, if I'm not mistaken. And just to follow up on a couple of issues, I think I'll be discussing in my one-on-one, but there is off of Baldwin, there is a sign that's been faded for a long, long time, and it really affects those residents and the list of future agenda items. Other than that, I'm looking forward to the Salinas Valley Solid Waste Authority meeting and Tamsi coming up.
Great. Tony?
Well, I participated at the first day of school at National, at Nativita Elementary. That was an experience to meet with parents and children, it was nice. Congratulations to all your staff, city manager, all the law enforcement, fire, all your staff made National Night Out. It, it was fantastic. You and I were champions also, I don't know what you call that game, but you did pretty good, you had a lot of balls in there. Thank you. MST board meeting yesterday, we had a strategic planning, we're very strategic. So if you can get a chance, ride the bus, that way you know what I'm doing out there. Grand opening this coming Saturday, Ensign Community Park. Grand opening this coming Saturday, Ensign Community Park, on Sunday, October 17th is going to be great, a lot of people are going to be out there. Also, on Wednesday, on the 20th, come to the Flying Artichoke Restaurant at the airport, they're going, they're introducing their brand-new patio, that's going, it, it looks fantastic, you know, so we're going to be there on Wednesday, the 20th, and, and, and the night before, my colleague here, Councilor Barajas, is having his District One Community Meeting, so I'll be there supporting him as well. I don't know what time that is, I hope you got burritos. So the artichoke patio will be at 5:00 PM, so come on over, and, and also, Officer Danny Garcia, his annual event, Salinas Pal Car Show, on the 23rd, that's going to be great. Bring, if you don't have a car, bring your bicycle or whatever you want, but, thank you, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Tony. Jose?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to start off by thanking a few folks, so I'm going to start off by thanking Mr. Carlos Ortega, the Information Systems Manager, Mr. Matthew Nelson, our Airport Manager, and Patricia Barajas, our City Clerk, for taking some time over the break to meet with me and answer some of my questions. I really thoroughly enjoyed getting to learn about the various functions of each of your departments, some of the challenges that you guys face, and some, from your perspective, some of the opportunities that we have to improve services within them. So thank you and appreciate that, the time that you guys all took to do that. Also want to give a shout-out to our Information Systems teams for beginning the .gov transition. If you haven't noticed, we have a new website, salinas.gov, and in the coming months, all of our emails will also be updated, so want to commend them on taking on that project and, you know, seeing all the work that they're going to be doing over the next few months, updating all of our emails. So keep an eye out for the IT team, if they reach out to update your, your email, just make sure you guys respond to them in a timely manner. Also want to give a shout-out to the Salinas Regional Sports Authority, they hosted two pretty big events this, in the last 30 days. They hosted the Chevron Soccer Academy on July 12th in partnership with the Alianza de Fútbol, the San Jose Earthquakes, and the Boys and Girls Club of Monterey County. They had over 250 young players from all across the valley join them, they had professional scouting opportunities for our youth as well, which is really key in an area where we have so much talent, but a lack of opportunity to attend these, you know, out-of-the-area meetings or events where there are scouts, this is an opportunity for that to happen locally. They also hosted the Alianza de Fútbol Tournament, which is the first time that the city of Salinas was a host for this tournament, the two-day tournament with over 150 teams, 50 of which were local teams, and they had approximately 6,000 people over Saturday and Sunday this past weekend. If you saw some of the traffic, you definitely know that there were lots and lots of people out there, really excited to see us at work. Also had the opportunity to attend the Salinas Police Department swearing-in, I'll just go ahead and give a quick shout-out to them. Mr. Luis Bravo, who was promoted to Assistant Chief, Kendall Gray, who was promoted to Commander, Alex Amora, who was promoted to Sergeant, Robert Suniga, also promoted to Sergeant, Melissa Roman, promoted to forensic specialist, and Tara Pollam, and promoted to investigative specialist. Very quick funny story, it was actually through this Police Department swearing-in that I realized I went to school with Officer Bravo's daughter, right? So it just really put into perspective just how small of a world, you know, we live in. Also had the opportunity to join the Salinas City Elementary School District Welcome Back Kickoff Event, and I had the opportunity to join my alma mater, Rosava Elementary School. I was joined by some of our firefighters from Fire Station One. Interestingly and funny enough, even though they had, the children had about a dozen firefighters in front of them in a fire engine, every single kid that came up and said hi to the firefighters will tell them, I want to be a police officer. So part a little bit for our fire department, but they took it like champions, they were like, yes, Salinas is the great, greatest place to be, greatest place to work, but just know that we were out there as well. Also had the opportunity last week to join the Mr. Fraustel's Auto and Diesel Mechanics class at the ROP program, to speak a little bit more about the Neighborhood Beautification Grant. Our educational partners are looking for different ways to engage our youth and, you know, and civic participation, so I got to speak a little bit more about the Neighborhood Beautification Grant, got to hear some interesting project ideas and proposals that they'll be having, so if you see any submissions from a young person in your district, just keeping out for those as well. Just want to mention a few things, the aquarium is offering free tickets for Monterey County residents, that just went live today, they're first come, first served, the dates are for September 2nd through the 14th, you can check out more online on their website. Also, want to give a shout-out to Lisa Murphy, who is working to hire our Deputy Director of Economic Development. I saw that posting about an hour or two right before our council meeting, so really excited to see us fill those roles. Like my colleague mentioned, I have a district, my first community meeting this year on Tuesday, August 19th, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM at ALCAL High School, so our District One Community Meeting, we're going to be focusing on housing and community development, library and community services, and public works as well. I'll also be having a subsequent community meeting in September, and I'll share more information as we finalize those details. Also, one last thing, this Thursday, August 14th, after our Salinas Valley Basin Groundwater Sustainability Agency meeting, there is an event over at 201 Main. It's a free event for students, but there is a $30 fee for anyone else who would like to join. It's on approaches to demand management and agricultural basins across California, it's going to be moderated by our very own General Manager of the GSA, Parrot Hartman, and welcome you all to join. And I have one follow-up item for tonight, and I'd like, like to ask for a buddy to further the sister-city conversations with the city of Morelia, if I have someone to team up with. Also, my barada. Thank you.
Erica, Ariola?
Of course, you would catch me right in the middle of a cough. I know it's been about, it's been about a month since we last met, and I'm just going to start off with a couple of thank-yous. Excuse me. Patricia, Whitney, Juan Carlos, and Jose Ariola, the last couple of weeks, I've been stopping by City Hall just to, to check in, I guess that was because I was missing all of our city council meetings. So I just want to thank, I just want to thank staff for, you know, answering a bunch of follow-up questions and just getting me, continuing to get me connected, and just kind of, kind of clarifying their respective roles here at City Hall, and so, as I was, as I was coming in over, over our, our summer break, I also had an opportunity to catch our Youth Council in, in action, they're running a team-building activity here in front of City Hall, got a chance to speak with staff, and it looks like we got a really good group of, of young adults, eager and excited to, to learn about more about our, our local, our local government. Also had the opportunity to attend the National Night Out, and, you know, just go on record, fire department has way better swag than our police department, so way to go. Also had the opportunity to stop by the Boys and Girls Club, they had their end-of-year member presentation. I know that Councilwoman De La Rosa is not here this evening, but I did want to share with her, I, in, in speaking with them, I always talk about like, you know, what can the city do to support their work, and one thing that they did bring up was that they're in need of, sounds like they're in need of just a better crosswalk, because they do have young children that do walk to the Boys and Girls Club that live in the, in the area, and so I did, I did look around, I was like, oh yeah, like you guys really do need one. Taking into consideration, yeah, it's, it really is, it's in a residential area, but when it comes to walking there, could you, you know, we should look into it. Salinas Police Activities League, had a chance to stop by there, as you know, they, they host a toy show here in Salinas, they had a really good turnout, they had so many vendors there that they had to put some vendors outside, and that they're already booked for the next toy show. I did receive a number of phone calls and talked to some people regarding the Gatling Creek. There's some concerns about people living there, so I was able to do a walkthrough with some of the residents, and in terms of Gatling Creek, there's a big concern regarding like potential fires, and there are people that are living there. We're a couple of months away from January, and that's when we do get a lot of rain, and so I just want to make sure that no one gets injured or seriously hurt. Also had the chance to stop by the city of Salinas for the Relief for Life fundraiser, also had the opportunity to stop by the staff, the city of Salinas staff barbecue, and also looking forward to our upcoming ribbon ceremony. I'll end it there, thank you.
Thank you. Margaret?
All right, I'll keep mine short. Okay, first of all, a couple of things, just, I think the back-to-school events were great, I was really happy to be invited, I went to Lincoln School, and it was, that's where my kids went, and it was just so fun to see them all dressed up in these adorable outfits, men, men and women, and their kids, and everyone was really excited to learn, and it just made, it just filled me with so much joy, and the three firemen that were there were wonderful, they had Taffy, the firehouse dog, and she was a huge hit, even better than the balloon thing that people were waiting in line to take pictures at, so that was really great. And then the Salinas City Elementary School District event, I think, was fantastic at the church, that was really fun. I want to wish Gloria de la Rosa a speedy recovery, I know she's still struggling a little bit, but we miss her here, especially me down at the end, it's very lonely at this end without her, so I hope she's doing well. And I want to just thank everyone for having really a nice respectful evening, and I think we all treated her with really good respect, and I appreciate that, makes the evenings a lot more fun. I got to go to the Salinas Valley Speaks and listen to our mayor present, he did an excellent job talking about all the stuff that's happening in Salinas, so that was really exciting, it was fun to hear from all the different mayors. I do have one appointment that I'd like to make for Measure G, and he's, his name is JP Mendoza, and he's a former and newly-retired Salinas Police Officer, a decorated one, so I'm thrilled to have him on Measure G, and I'm working right now on Parade of Lights, Holiday Parade of Lights, so that's going to happen, and we're working on a veterans event as well, so those are a couple of things happening in my district that I'm putting some time into. Last but not least, oh, future items, code enforcement, I just want to understand that process a little bit better. I know we're staffing back up, but I get a lot of questions in my district about code enforcement issues, so that would be a great item for the future. And thank you guys for giving me all the dates for things that are happening in your district, because I'd, I'd like to attend those as well.
I followed a lot of everyone around, so I'll, I'll just let it go at that, I think we've had a productive evening, and why don't we do it again on August 26th? You need adjourned.